All right, welcome everybody to the City of Placerville City Council meeting, our regular meeting for August 8th, 2017. If you could all rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Thank you very much. Before we get going, I'd like to let you know that at least as we stand here right now, the little clock up there doesn't work. I will be keeping time here on my very not-so-fancy cellphone. So, when we get to that part of the agenda, just to let you know that. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Mayor Clorici?
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Here.
Announcements? Any brief comments by the city council members?
Just like to welcome everyone tonight. Good to see a full crowd here and look forward to hearing from you. And I'd just like to thank our Chief of Police, Chief Ortega, and our incredible police staff for a very successful National Night Out. Really enjoyed being with our community, seeing all the neighborhoods, and riding with the officers. It was just a huge success and just showed us what an amazing community we have. And so, thank you for all the efforts and thanks for our community for turning out for that. It's really one of the highlights of the year.
Mark?
Mr. Mayor, I'll keep this brief. I just would like to thank our Public Works Department and our city crew. Our crew is getting closer back up to a workable staffing and it's really showing. The crew has done some excellent work on getting Spring Street, Clay, Bedford's, Pleasant Street, and they're moving up towards Airport Road and Newtown. Some long overdue maintenance to get the roads opened back up and hopefully, we will start to get them paved soon. So, thanks to the crew for their hard work so far this summer.
All righty. Patty?
Well, I was gonna direct also my compliments to National Night Out. It was, I thought it was a great night. Unfortunately, I guess some of the attendance was down because of the horrible heat wave we were having. We keep blaming that heat wave for everything, but it's the truth. But it was very successful, I think, and thank you all and thank everybody who participated. It was really, it was great.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for all of that. Okay. Item 3.2, the review. Review and provide information regarding the new parking program regulations. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just working. Okay. I'm gonna go through just quickly kind of a review of this and then I'll open it up for any questions you may have. So, Chief, you wanna go and tell you-
It doesn't sound very-
Is my mic working? Can you hear me? No?
I think-
I'm eating it.
He is.
All right, I'll do my best. So, to just kinda go through the history of the program, the new parking, the first parking pay stations were purchased in 2007. And the program was implemented at that time to encourage turnover in our two-hour parking spaces and to generate funding for maintenance of our parking facilities. That initial purchase of our parking pay stations was $148,000 approximately, and the idea was that it would pay back our general fund, which we call it here the Reserve for Economic Uncertainties, over time, over about a seven-year period was the idea. Next, Chief. The useful life of parking pay stations is estimated between seven and 10 years normally. In 2013, after the Great Recession, we recognized that our revenues were not paying for the program. Our maintenance of our facilities was not happening. We were not being able to pay for all of the costs of the program, et cetera, through the revenues that were coming in. At that time, the council appointed an ad hoc parking committee to look at it. We met on probably about four occasions in 2013, 2014, I believe. However, at that time, we were also starting the downtown rehabilitation program of Main Street. And we did not want to make major changes and do things to the parking program at the same time we had the streets torn up and things were going on. So, we suspended the committee, suspended any recommendations at that time, and then we reconvened after that project was done. So, we started back up again in 2016. So, when the committee first met, the first thing we did is we simply said, "Let's brainstorm here. What are our options? What can we do to make this program produce the funding we need to maintain our facilities?" Because it doesn't do any good to have a parking program if we can't maintain those facilities. So, just quickly, I'll kinda walk through these. We looked at reducing free parking in all surface lots from two hours to one hour. We looked at reducing free parking, just the parking structure, from two hours to one hour. We said, "What if we were to eliminate free parking in the parking structure? Leave it everywhere else, but just not do it in the parking structure." We said, "What if we were to charge 50 cents per hour for the first two hours? Eliminate the free parking, but charge just 50 cents instead of any higher rate for parking." We said, "What if we eliminated free parking in all the parking lots? What if we charged 50 cents for the first two hours in all the parking lots?" "What if we reduced on-street parking from two hours to one hour?" That was one of the things that was brought up. And let me explain, these things that are being, that are mentioned here, this was the entire committee. These were not staff recommendations or ideas. Some of them did come from staff, but a lot of them came from the committee. We looked at some other things related to, there's a small parking lot on Center Street that wasn't being necessarily enforced to its full capacity. Eliminating multiple lease discounts for those people that lease spaces in our parking facilities. We looked at, we previously offered a multi-space discount if you had over five lease permits that you purchased. We looked at eliminating those. We looked at leasing the spaces between the Shell Station and Jack Russell Brewery on what is known as Old Canal Street. As another option, we looked at limiting those spaces where currently, at that time, they were free. We looked at limiting and making them two-hour free parking. We looked at enforcing parking regulations on Sundays. We evaluated the use of parking spaces behind Old City Hall. We looked at adding daily parking on the third floor of the parking structure, which currently is leased parking only. We looked at extending the parking rules that were, at that time, were 5:00 to 6:00, 7:00, or even 8:00. And then we looked at providing a $2 discount for, if you were purchasing for the entire day. We talked about reestablishing the Placerville Business Improvement Association/Placerville Business Improvement District, the tax assessment associated with that. We talked about, could we do an add-on sales tax measure to pay for the costs? Talked about a common area maintenance fee, which would mean, based on the size of your, the business owner, would pay a fee towards parking based on a square footage or some other factor. And then, keep the two-hours free parking, but go to $2 per hour parking thereafter as opposed to the $1 that we were previously at. We talked about using, we currently have a downtown business surcharge that brings in funding that is used by Placerville Downtown Association. We talked about using that for parking rather than putting it towards marketing that the downtown association uses it for. It was suggested we increase free parking to three hours, and then also is suggested, "Well, let's just eliminate daily paid parking completely." So, after they reviewed all those, we presented a cost for each of those items and compared those and talked about what would work and what wouldn't, based on the budget numbers that we needed. And the recommendations that came back from the committee were as follows. And this was a strong one from them, that we needed to maintain the two-hour free parking in all lots and on Main Street. That was very important to them. They recommended that we change the rate for daily parking from $1 an hour to $2 an hour. They recommended that we increase the lease parking fees by the change in the Consumer Price Index. That was from the CPI from 2007, when we first established it, to current, and that amount was 27 percent. They recommended we eliminate the multiple lease discounts for permits. And they recommended that we lease the spaces between Shell Station and Jack Russell Brewery. Enforce the daily parking rules in the Center Street, small Center Street lot. Extend daily parking enforcement from 5:00 to 7:00. Evaluate the use of parking spaces behind Historic City Hall, and I just mentioned quickly on those. Those have been done. Those are now leased spaces, where previously those were being, the courts were being allowed to use those spaces for their use. That is now being leased, some of them by the courts, but others to other public members, so that's been done. Account for parking citation revenue within the downtown parking district fund. We are doing that, previously that citation revenue was going into the general fund. However, all of the expenses were not being charged to the parking fund at that time either. Much of the staff time for public works who maintained those and did work in the stalls were not being charged there. So, that's what's kinda the offset that was there. And then finally, enforce daily and lease parking rules seven days a week with a ghost day. Now, just to emphasize, the idea of the ghost day is not that it's a day when people get free parking, but it's a day when we're not enforcing it. So, but it's a day that we, nobody knows what it is. So, it's, I don't, I can't even tell you what they are. They do have a schedule of what they do, the enforcement company does. So, the-
Okay. All right. Hold on. Thank you very much. That was really funny. Thank you. That was good. I don't know who did that, but that was good. Will, we will treat you with respect when you speak, and I expect that you will treat our staff with respect when they speak. Thank you.
So, this is just quickly looking at those things that we, that was recommended that we put in place and the revenues that would come as a result of that. So, this is just the same thing that we just looked at and then the revenues. And then also, because we were changing some things related to enforcement and other items, there are also some expenditures associated with that. So, Chief, you can go to the next slide. These are the additional expenditures that were related to that. One thing that I'll note on here, you can see the one, number 13, that is crossed out, that was to pay for the old pay stations. They recommended, and the council agreed, to eliminate that loan, so basically write off that loan for the old pay stations, and then start the new pay station. On number 14, you see the cost, estimated cost to do the new pay stations. That was the cost at that time. Those pay stations actually came in quite a bit cheaper. As you noted, the others were $148,000. These were just under $100,000, so about $98,000. So, that cost is actually a little bit less than the $12,000 per year that is shown there for the nine pay stations. Next. So, the main changes from the old program to the new program are this. Under the two-hour free parking, everything is the same with the exception that it's enforced seven days a week rather than Monday through Saturday that was previously done. Parking enforcement hours before was 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Saturday excluding holidays. Under the new program, it's seven days a week, 8:00 to 7:00 excluding holidays. So, those are the differences there. With the pay stations, the new pay stations, we went to a pay-by-plate process rather than pay-by-space. Permit parking fees were, as were recommended, were increased based on the CPI. So, in all of the lots, except for the second floor of the garage, it went from $40 to $50 a month, and the second floor of the garage went from $60 to $70 a month. One more, Chief. And then the last one on there is the, it went from $1 per hour to $2 per hour. Those are the main changes that were implemented that affect the general public and those that use the lots. So, just quickly, I'll walk through some of the complaints that we've received and maybe address some of these. People do not know their license plate number when they get to the pay station. Yes, that's true. We understand that. We did fairly soon after this happened, put up several signs in the facilities, our parking facilities, reminding people, "Take your license plate number with you to the pay station to pay by plate." People cannot make the pay stations work. I have, we heard some complaints about that early on. They seem to be less that I've heard recently. People were used to Sunday being free. It is affecting business downtown. Yes. If I come downtown in the morning for 15 minutes and return in the afternoon, I get ticketed because the system does not know I left in between. That is true, but that is not a change from the old system. That was the process in the old system also. The difference is simply that with the old system, it was much harder to monitor with the type of equipment that we had, where now, we can monitor it, so it was, is being enforced more. If I come before 8:00, the pay station will not let me add time. That was a concern we had. We have fixed that. That should not be a concern any longer. Signs do not list enforcement time. How long do I have to pay in the evening? The signs, individual signs on the street do not, the signs at the pay station do list the enforcement time now. Those are still temporary signs, and we're still working on finalizing that in case something is recommended to change coming forward. So, next, Chief. I've always parked in the leased spaces after 5:00 p.m. That was changed with this program, where lease parking now goes till 7:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday, where before it was Monday through Friday. And that was a recommendation that came out of the entire process for businesses. Most businesses, as you know, that lease parking spaces, most of them, a lot of them anyway, go Monday through Sunday. They don't, they don't take the weekends off. So, where do they park if we don't have lease parking for them? So, the pay station would not take cash. I think those are working fine. We don't hear that as much anymore, if, maybe that was early on. Was unable to extend time on the station or the mobile app. I think maybe that was a learning thing that is getting better as we learn the machines. I was forced to park over the line because everyone else was. That's not really related to the parking program, but anyway, that's one that came. I've always been able to come and go all day long. Understand that, but that's not what our adopted ordinance says. I have a permit, so why did I get a ticket while parked on the street? Well, the permit is for parking in the parking structures where you're assigned. And then I don't have a license plate, so I didn't know how to pay at the pay station. That was one I think has been resolved now. We were working on how that, when working with the company, how they do that. For example, they, if you buy a new car, you don't have your plate there. What number do you put in? I didn't know there was only one zone, so I kept moving my car and ended up getting a ticket, I guess. I arrived too early for the pay station to take payment. We already addressed that one. Customers won't stay longer than two free hours. Again, that did not change. It was two free hours before, you had to pay after that before. Customers are always looking at their watch so they don't have to put more money in rather than enjoying the shops and classes. Again, that's not new from what we had before. I couldn't see the signs because brush is overgrown. That was a problem we had in one of our lots. I think we've taken care of that problem. And then, this is the adopted budget that the council adopted, just to show you where the money is going. This is the revenue side of it. You can see we have, or we're estimating $113,000 in leased parking fees, $135,000 in daily parking fees, $30,000 in parking citations, for a total of $279,000. The expenses, I won't go through all of this in detail, but it includes our personnel time for various departments that work in the parking structure. Big cost is for the enforcement services. You can see the $101,000. For the service that we're getting, though, I will state that that is actually less than what we were paying before, so that cost did not go up. The citation processing complex, you can see, and then the various costs down there, I won't go into all those in detail, but they're involved with cleaning and et cetera and taking care of the garage. Finally, transferring from the general fund that pays towards this, $8,600. The $9,800 is to pay for the new parking pay stations. Leaves a total of $61,000 of revenues over expenditures, and then the committee recommended, we identified a little over $400,000 in deferred maintenance in our garage and our parking facilities. And so, the committee said, "Let's pay for that over a 10-year period and take care of that deferred maintenance problem." So, they took $40,000 a year. And then they also recommended a capital replacement fund for major products, projects, not just maintenance, but major improvements that may need to be done to our parking facilities going forward. And so, when you subtract the revenues from the expenditures, you have a $1,900 revenue in your budget. Last item, if you go to the next one, Chief. Questions? Go one more. I've got one more slide in there, I believe. Oh, it didn't get in there. Here we go. There's what I'm looking for. This is a comparison of how we're doing, and this is for April 1st to June 30th. And you can see in '15, '16, our daily parking fees, we brought in about $11,000 during that time period. This year, with the increase of our parking fees, we're doing about what we expected, about a little over $22,000. So, they about doubled when we raised our fees from $1 an hour to $2 an hour. The leased parking fees, same thing. Those, we actually, I think there's some other things. We're actually leasing more spaces than we were last year. There's some new businesses that have come in. So, that's why, the increase is actually 27 percent for lease parking fees, but you can see it's up 37 percent. Parking citations are actually down a little bit. That is due to during April and May, when our old machines were almost not working. We were not enforcing as much during that time. And when the new machines were put in also, we delayed enforcement for some time while we were getting those up and running. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Does the council have any questions for Cleve?
Not at this time.
I had one. I thought I almost had the answer, Cleve. When did we actually, we've got the new machines installed. When have we actually begun fully enforcing everything that you just went through?
Well, the machines were installed right around May 1st. We started, we never did really stop enforcing. We continued the enforcement, but we weren't doing very much enforcement at that time. It had to be pretty gross negligence on the part of the parking person that we would enforce something. So, it was probably closer to the end of May before we were strictly enforcing.
So, we could say June 1st?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a question. I do have a question, Cleve. You said that behind the courthouse, we have evaluated the usage and increased the leased parking opportunities behind the courthouse. Do we own that entire lot?
Actually, let me correct that. That's behind Historic City Hall, not behind the courthouse.
Okay, so the court owns the-
The court owns all of those. We have nothing to do with those.
Okay, that was my question. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. When the, one of the issues is using license plates rather than spots on the ground. One of the things when you have an issue like this, you become acutely aware of other people's parking. So, I've been, whenever I go into a town, I look at how they do their parking. My experience is it's about evenly split. Some of them still use spots on the ground, but a lot of them also use the license plates. Did you find that to be the case as well when we were investigating this?
Yeah, we did. We looked at what others are doing. We also talked to the parking people that we were working with and asked them what they're seeing, what the trends are. And the trend is moving towards plate rather than by space.
Okay, thank you.
And that's it for questions? Okay. We're gonna open this up to the floor. You will not have the handy three-minute thing up there, but I will be keeping it on my phone. If you have written comments, please summarize them. And then, if you'd like, you can give them to our clerk and make sure that Regina gets those, so they can be all, what all of the words can be put into the record. Anyway, and we have a lot of people here, so please be considerate of the person talking. Let's avoid, or let's, in fact, let's eliminate side conversations, because it doesn't take a lot of side conversation to make some noise, and then we can't hear what's going on. So, who, let me get my phone ready. Please state your name and where you live, and let's have it.
I would like to thank the city council for relooking at the parking issue and putting it on the agenda for us tonight. My car was one of the unique situations with no license plate. I chose to buy my car up here and pay the money in Eldorado County rather than go to Folsom, and it does take about two months for DMV to send you your plates. Going into the parking lot, I knew I had a problem. I looked around for the parking enforcers. They're always there when you don't want them, but they were not there. I knew if I put $2 under the windshield, it would not be there. So, I just parked. I got a ticket. When I went to ask about it, I was told I should have put my VIN number in. Well, you do have to open the car to get the VIN number, and I was not going to keep it unlocked. It's also a 17-character number, where there's only eight in the license plate. So, that was really just a poor suggestion. I did get that ticket taken care of, and I appreciate that. The other issue I've had is sometimes the machine will not take every dollar bill. You know, they're picky. And so, one bill goes and one doesn't. If you only have $2, it takes your first bill. The second one it doesn't take, you get no credit. It won't give you that half hour at least that you have paid for. It won't give it back either. It just, you're just out that money. So, I do think that half hour issue needs to be looked at. Myself and some other people have had 50 face-to-face contacts with Placerville business owners in the last two weeks about this subject. Without an exception, they were angry, appalled, and surprised at how the regulations came out and what they consisted of. And mainly surprised because the implication was that the business owners were totally in agreement with this, and we found that not to be the case. One, in fact, of a prominent business person said that this was her last straw, and she's definitely looking at relocating, which would be a big loss for us. I believe that this was a situation of too much, too fast. You know, the two-hour extra, the day extra, the $2 double increase, it just was a little bit too much. It seems like a knee-jerk reaction to a parking situation that did need to be addressed. We need a longer-term plan. What's the plan for Placerville? Is it gonna maintain Main Street where you go through at a snail's pace, because it's kinda dangerous to go any faster, and you can't find a place to park? Or are we gonna make it so you park at either ends, make it a space that you can walk and spend your money at? We want money. We need the tourists. I love the tourists. They're a big part of it. But the tourists do not carry this town on a regular day-to-day basis. The locals do. And I feel like with this regulation, that you have thrown the locals under the bus. It just isn't gonna work for us.
Okay. Thank you. Your, I'm sorry. I'm gonna do this like one minute for the next post.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Sure. Thank you.
So, the, I think that it seemed like there was some cloistered kind of things going on around this, and many people were surprised. So, what we need is the transparency. Where is the transparency in governing? We need to have that, and I felt that this was not the case here. You don't drive your car down the street looking in the rearview mirror. You look straight ahead, and in fact, you look way beyond. So, what I would like to know is what is the city council's plan? I don't, I wanna know this isn't just a Band-Aid, that this is, what is your 20-year plan for parking? It should be different than now. Think ahead and show us that. And make it address all the needs of the people who work and play and live in our city, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all right, all right. Okay. Okay. Applause after everyone is just gonna slow this thing down. So, let's kinda hold off on our applause. Thank you very much. Okay.
Sue Rodman. And I was a member drafted into the Placity, the Parking Committee. And the first thing we noticed was that there's definitely a problem with Placerville's parking. And the definition of that, you have to define the problem before you can solve it. And paid parking appears to be necessary to prevent employees of all types and business owners of all types from monopolizing the parking, leaving no place for customers to park. The second part of the problem was, the parking district revenues did not cover the operating costs, and no funds were accumulating for maintenance of parking lot asphalt or replacement of any pay stations, or painting, or signs, or anything else. The shortfall in operating expenses appeared to be over $50,000. In fact, closer to $60,000. And capital improvement needs for surfacing, signage, paint, et ceteras, appear to be a little over $400,000. So, we had a $450,000 shortfall. Almost a half a million-dollar shortfall. So, we recommended the options that Cleve just went through. And I think that some of the things that we considered need to be known by the public. The parking district needs to pay its own costs. It's unfair to taxpayers for their tax dollars to subsidize downtown businesses by funding the parking garage and surface lots through the city. It would be fair for the city to purchase leased spaces for city employees, the same as other business, but not to shoulder the entire downtown parking district costs. The city contains other businesses that provide their own parking at no cost to the city. Businesses, examples are the ones on Placerville Drive and on Broadway. The parking garage appears to provide the most income, but it also has the highest costs and needs the largest increase in returns to be self-sustaining. The downtown merchants gave us strong support for keeping the two-hour free parking everywhere, Main Street, surface lots, and the parking garage. However, that two-hour free parking lot creates problems for the parking machines and confusion two-hour free parking lot creates problems for the parking machines and confusion for customers. One solution would be to keep the two-hour free parking on Main Street, eliminate free parking for all surface lots and parking garage, maybe charge a dollar an hour. And if that doesn't bring in revenue, then you're going to have to go to $2 an hour. But the big problem is you still have to find a way to balance the budget so that the parking actually pays its own costs. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lori. I own the Lyre's bench downtown. And you guys were saying that you cut the foliage back, et cetera. This is a picture taken today of our back lot. This is a picture taken today in our parking area. Can you see this lease parking sign? Our customers can't see it either. I mean, if you guys are going to charge us, please maintain what you're charging us for. Thanks.
My name is Jim Bonthorpe. I've been a resident for fourteen years, and I love Placerville. But I got to ask, where do y'all park? Do you have special parking?
All right, please, please. I've made a request. Show some civility here. Thank you.
But you're paying these people to walk around and cite people. Would it be cheaper if you installed parking meters so you didn't have to pay health benefits, salary and everything? I mean, the initial cost might be something, but I don't know. It just seems like there's a lot of effort made to penalize the local citizens.
Thank you.
Hello, council. My name's Damian Butler. I live here in Placerville. Been a resident, certified since eighty-five. Was born here and raised here. It's a great small-town community. As you can see the turnout, we all like to come together. I feel poorly represented in the choice as far as parking goes. I didn't know, like it said, until it actually had happened, which was kind of shocking to me. So I've crunched some numbers for the people and businesses downtown. For one employee, generally an eight-hour-a-day shift, it's $12 for parking, including the two free hours. Five days per week comes up to sixty bucks. Four weeks in a month, $240. Twelve months out of the year, one person is paying $2,880, assuming they don't go over that eight-hour limit. My wife and I both work downtown. Both have awesome jobs at great establishments. So you're going to double that. That's going to be $5,600 per year for both of us to work. I got five kids. That's a lot of Capri sons. And even further crunching, twenty employees for, say, fifteen businesses, which there is a lot more downtown, that's netting $864,000 per year just off the businesses. That's a lot of clams. So addressing that, maybe we can do something for the locals or those that do have to work downtown with a parking pass or discounted parking. That way, we don't have to worry about some people running out, "Oh, no, I'm going over my time. I work in a restaurant." You never know exactly when you're going to get out. Second point I'd like to make is I've talked to some of the parking attendants about leased spaces, places that used to be behind the courthouse and next to the courthouse across from my place of business, and they are now leased. They said that's their biggest moneymakers, quote, unquote, giving out over $1,000 a day in tickets. So I think something needs to be addressed about that. My third point, the main point I'd like to make, is we do a lot of business downtown here in Placerville. Whether it be summer or winter, people are going to Tahoe, coming back. They find our place, a cute little community they can park, walk up and down the street, hit a restaurant here, hit a restaurant there. I like to dub that the Hangtown crawl, you know, go around, because we have a lot of different things around this town. Since this parking has happened, I believe businesses have lost money. Because I've had people come in, sit at my establishment, and literally have a timer saying, "Oh, I'd like to stay for a meal or another drink," but I've already went to your nice little hardware store and went up the street to Airens and got something to eat here, and now I wanted to have another drink, but I got to go because I don't want to get a ticket. So we got to think about all of those facts when it comes to it. And I'd like to see this issue readdressed now that we all know what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Sheila Kelly from Pal Steamers. And I brought you the petitions that I think almost everybody in here has signed, as I promised last time. I'll give those over there. I had somebody come in this afternoon that's a software company, and they turned in their parking pass today because they're leaving Placerville because doing business here is just too difficult, and they're really angry. It's another one that's leaving us because they're just not happy with the way things have gone here. And I think you can tell that we're having a hard time with it. I hope we can get our Sundays back because my business literally is fifty percent less and falling on my music on Sunday. And people just can't stay. They won't stay. And so it's really hurting us. So I'll give these to you, and thanks for reconsidering for us.
Hi, my name's Al. I'm the new owner of the Placerville Public House, new business owner to Main Street. But been here about six years or so, and I've seen Main Street grow and become a really thriving area down on Main Street, and we're hoping to keep it that way. And I, too, have seen a dip in business. And talking to my customers, a lot of them specifically do not come down during the daytime because of parking. I've been told that numerous times, they come later in the evening, after five. Well, now it's seven. So now you're pushing my clientele, which is typically my happy hour and later in the evening, now even later. I know a lot of the businesses on Main Street. It's not an isolated, it's not just me, it's everyone. I, too, brought the petition. We passed it around. We had numerous people willing to sign it. My thing is, is we need people down on Main Street. We need people down on Main Street spending money. We promote each other all day long. I send people to other bars, businesses, stores. I'm not selfish in the fact that I think they need to come to my place. I think Main Street is a thriving area to frequent. Go here, have dinner. Go here, have drinks. Come here, watch music. Go to the antique shops. But you create this time, tick-tock, tick-tock, "I need to get out of Main Street. I need to get off the street. I need to move my car." It doesn't create an environment that where people want to stay, hang out, spend money. And I think that's the bigger agenda, is that you want people spending money down here on these locally small-owned businesses. That's what Placerville has going for. It's a unique downtown environment. It's not like every other town in California. It has that small-business vibe, has that small character. And I think we need to find a way to keep people down on Main Street and not encourage them to move and leave. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stefania, and I'm owner of the Hart Lounge where the Cary House is located. And something that I thought that wasn't addressed, that has been brought to the attention from other local businesses, is that you have a particular parking lot enforcer that feels the need to wear, in a really hot day, knuckle-enforced gloves. And now we've noticed handcuffs. And I don't know why that's necessary for this parking lot guy. I also tried to speak to him on one occasion when I was parked outside my yellow zone in front of my business after five, unloading wine. And he was looking at the sign and looking at my car and looking at the sign, looking at my car. And somebody teased I was going to get a ticket. So I went out and say, "Hey, it's after five. It's okay. And this is my business. I'm loading." Excuse me, excuse me. And he walked away from me and would not address me. So that little kind of tension with the new parking enforcement is a little bit awkward, especially for someone as small as me. I just wanted to address that.
Hi, my name is Larry Park. I'm a resident here in Placerville. And like I said the last time, I was gone for thirty-two years and moved back and was happy to be back. I always missed this town the whole time I was gone. But I have noticed, I play music here in town. We played the Public House, and we played Pals quite a bit, and we're there just about every Sunday. And this last Sunday, it was like half of the people that normally show up. We probably get most of them coming in around, I would say, the music goes from one to five. They come in about 3:30, 4 o'clock. And that whole time before then, it's just, the business is gone. It's an unfriendly environment. It's not working. It feels, it's almost like it's predatory. I mean, the way these guys walk around, or this particular guy walks around and writes tickets, they're just not, they're not friendly. And, you know, I hate to see that in this town. I love this town. My great-grandparents are buried here, my grandparents. I mean, I go back a long way. And, you know, to come back to this and then changing these parking laws are just, I mean, I drove downtown the other day, starting at the courthouse, I think it was last Thursday, and I'm driving down through town, heading towards, heading west, and I counted fifteen open spaces at 12:20 in the afternoon. You never used to see that. Yesterday, I parked, I had to go to Pals to pick up some equipment that I had left there. This was at 10:20 or 10:30. And the whole side of the street, there was three cars. It looked like a ghost town. And there's got to be another solution to make this a more friendly atmosphere when you come into town. I mean, on Sundays, all the locals like to get together, hang out down at Pals, and talk about the week, and talk about the upcoming week, and, you know, just hang out. We go back and forth between all the other, you know, they go listen to music at the Public House or down at the White, or wherever they have the music. And, you know, it's, but this having to pay on Sundays anymore is just, I think, is just destroying the music scene, for one thing. And it's hurting all the businesses. But that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Thayer, and I'm a resident here. I don't have a business, but I do frequent downtown a lot. And I'm still trying to figure out how this can get resolved. And maybe might think of a shuttle service from the fairgrounds. People could park there, come downtown, maybe raise the parking structure. Ivy Parking, let's, you know, maybe build more, you know, parking structure. I don't know how this can really get resolved, but it is a problem. And I feel that it wasn't a problem, really, until all of this started happening a couple of years back. We would come, we'd park, you know, we knew that we'd had to leave or, you know, pay a little bit more money. This new program is not acceptable to me or to anyone else in this room. And so let's just try to work it out. If it's a shuttle service, or maybe looking at raising a parking structure somewhere else in this city, there's growth here, and there's going to be a lot more. And I just hope that you will all put your smart brains together and work something out for us.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carlotta Tormi. I'm a member of Gold Country Artist Gallery. We were one of the businesses that, for some reason, had no idea this was going on at all. When it came about, I called the parking people and spoke to someone named Aaron, who I gave some of our Gold Country specific issues that we were having. We have two spaces on the roof. And I'd asked if somebody come and address some of our questions. And to date, we have not been called back. I left my number. I've called three times. I have other issues, you know, that are my own issues and things that I have seen. And one thing that somebody mentioned about putting parking, the free two hours on the street only, well, what about people that are handicapped and need larger spaces? And as regards, one thing that I know that did happen, one person was ticketed, a handicapped car vehicle owner that parked in the lot and was ticketed for parking a little bit on the line because this person with a cane and a handicap placard could not get in and out of her car because the car next to her was over the line. She was given a ticket because when she came out, the car that was over the line was no longer there. And the ticket giver, when she explained to the lady, said, "Well, I didn't see that, so I'm giving you the ticket." This is the unfriendly reign of parking terror that is going on in Placerville. It is not friendly to the people who are visiting. There's no compassion. We have people from all over the world that come to look at the history here. And we now, we have forty-five members in our gallery. There are some times that we have to come in when we're not on staff, so we have paid and parked downstairs or on the street. There's things that happen all the time. There's other issues that I would like to know. Just one thing, and then I'll leave the rest of my comments alone. What if you're downtown to go to the hardware store to pick up something that, you know, you've got a person at home helping you with lighting. You go to the hardware store, you go home, and two hours later, you find out it's the wrong part. You need to go back. That's $2, $2 right off the top when you enter the parking lot again. Or you leave your charge card, or you leave a bag. Now you've got a drive-back. You no longer have a purse to put money in the lot. You get a ticket. A lot of these little things are driving people nuts. It's just, it's something that, it feels like a lot of the businesses, and each individual business is not like the one across the street. There's retail, there's restaurants, there's art galleries, there's different needs for all of those people. And it seems like some of us were really bypassed when all of this took place. It would have been nice to have a questionnaire of what we could do to help come up with some solutions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Canton, otherwise known as Johnny Pack. I've done a lot of business downtown. I used to own the Upstars Art Gallery above Empire Theater. I managed and operated that place for about ten years. I was the manager at Main Street Music for seven years. I'm also the author of Hangtown the Board Game, and that isn't found in many of the stores downtown. So I am very engrossed in the history of the area and so on. And right now, I'm working very closely with Hart Lounge. That's where I do my music lessons. I perform jazz there and a bunch of other things. So I've always had a place downtown to have my outlet. So one thing that's an interest of mine is behavioral economics, and one thing in that they call is choice architecture. And choice architecture is basically, people making a parking situation like this are creating choices for the people coming up and seeing this town. So they're either experiencing this parking situation the first time, or they're learning about it because they've been here and it's now changed. People are going to have knee-jerk reactions to it. Some of these things goes like, who cares? It was just $2. You know, you add that on, you stayed for three hours. That's the equivalent. And if you brought that into a perfectly rational model, some people might say, "Hey, I spent forty on dinner. What's the difference of forty-two so I could stay here and relax an extra hour?" They're not thinking like that. They're thinking very visceral, knee-jerk reaction. One example is working at Hart Lounge sometimes, hanging out there, doing music and things like this. I noticed that some people come in, they don't know that they're going to go to Hart Lounge when they come to Hart Lounge. They show up there, and it might be three or four in the afternoon, and it is a drinking establishment. So they need to choose, should I stay for a cider? But if I stay for a cider, do I risk getting a DUI by moving my car or adding parking to it later on in this whole thing? And they go, "Actually, I shouldn't drink until 5 o'clock. When 7 o'clock will elapse, I'll get off my two free hours," and so on. And Hart Lounge actually stopped opening until 5:00 PM for that reason, because enough people would not come in for happy hour anymore. So that's just one example. Sunday music, like Larry Park said, is absolutely same kind of thing. People aren't doing the Pals at Sundays. The thing, there's a bluegrass jam at Hart Lounge. I noticed they all ran out the door at one point. They used to stay and just play a few extra tunes. "Where are you guys going?" They say, "We need to go for the parking." So again, we had to change that to, "Bluegrass jam starts at 5:00." And so it's these little community things. Last thing I want to get in is a lot of people that own businesses down here are sole proprietorship, owner-operator, and they're taking a large risk opening up a gift shop or things like this. And they may not be making any money over a course of a year. They might not afford parking permits, even if they could get one, if there's enough space. They can't afford the daily thing. And if you look at, "What did you make this year owning a toy store or whatever kind of store you go?" They say, "Actually, I hope to make a profit in 2019 if things go really good." So this is an out-of-the-box expense of those. The other is that people, a lot of people are minimum-wage workers, like baristas, counter-help, and all these types of things. And if we look at what California minimum wage is proposed to be, is supposed to be like eventually fifteen. Well, right now, you've taken $2 off of all minimum-wage workers' earnings so that they can pay for the parking down here. So, thanks for my minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evelyn Veerkamp, Placerville. Just preliminary remark, I'm astonished to find out from one of the persons here that there's an enforcer walking around Placerville with knuckles, brass knuckles and handcuffs. One hears periodically about moves toward a police state, I'd never thought that Placerville would be in that category, and I hope that something's done about that. But the point that I actually want to make is, we've heard from a lot of business owners, and we'll undoubtedly hear from a lot more business owners, about how this is impacting their businesses. The city's primary motivation, it seems, for making these changes is try to cover their cost of running the parking program. That's legitimate, and I don't think anybody's going to argue with that. But it seems that on the other side of that, if you're losing, if a lot of business owners are losing a significant amount of business, the city is going to lose a lot of sales tax revenue. So, are you going to be losing more than what you're gaining? I don't know. Somebody needs to have a good look at that, find out what business owners are really losing, how much sales tax the city's really losing, and find some way to keep this town a friendly town, where people want to shop, and business owners can actually make a decent living. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Benedict. I grew up in this town, graduated class of 1974. I see a few, I see a few people here. So, I went online and I found a couple of towns. There's this one called Keene, New Hampshire. They only charge, they have free parking all day Sunday, after 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. And they charge, for short-term, they charge 50 cents per hour, long-term, 20 cents per hour. This was back in 2014, it might've gone up. But I did make some copies for you, and they have a nice little map that they show, that they hand out to people that aren't residents, so I have that for you. And then I also found another little town called Ocean Beach in California, where a lot of the, the parking is paid for by the stores. We have the Dog Beach, Wonderland, Starbucks, Union Bank, Rite Aid, CVS. And I know we have tons of different places around here like that, like behind Murray's Architecture, in front of the post office. We have just different places that could be opened up, possibly. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
My name's Tim Kelly. My wife and I own Powell Steamer. I'd just like to go back to Cleve's comments earlier about the, all their investigative information. And I had asked this question a couple of city council meetings ago, about the private parking on Reservoir Street. CVC 22658A and PC 602. I feel that you guys are all looking for revenue. That's a perfect place to pick up your leased parking and make some money. But I don't hear anything about it coming out of here, that that's even a possibility that you're looking at. I understand that is, from what I read and understand, is that that was designed for the residents, the private parking was set up for the people that own the housing on that hillside behind Reservoir Street. Was never designed for the businesses to have free rein and free parking back there. And I think that that's something that needs to be addressed, and figured out what to do about.
Good evening. I'm Heidi Meyer-Hafer. I own the Painted Owl downtown, and I've been on the Placerville Downtown Association for four years. I want to acknowledge the work of the Parking Committee for several years, grappling with a very difficult problem. And I wanna point out that at one meeting that I attended, we did discuss the possibility of CAM fees for local businesses, to maintain the community, communal area maintenance for specifically parking. It was, it was not met very, very well. But I pointed out how much money we're spending on enforcing parking with the machinery, the maintenance, the contracts, the employees' wages, taxes, benefits, all of that. If we take, if we take that out of the equation, what do we actually need to keep the parking garage and the parking lots maintained and functioning? That's a question I'd like to proceed with. And I would like to ask, 'cause we have a room full of merchants tonight who see what this alternative looks like and how it feels, might there be some way that the, that we could consider instituting some community support for maintaining these areas? It would alleviate the stress on our customers. We could have a more relaxed environment, we could be the friendly city that we, we believe we are. I was at a PDA meeting last night where Bill Robey was facilitating, and he said, "People come to this city to breathe. They come from the Bay Area, where there's all this congestion and traffic and competition, and they come here to breathe." I don't think that there's been a lot of deep breaths since we've instituted this, this program. I understand the need for raising revenues, but I'm wondering if there's some kind of compromise between the merchants, and the parking, and the city, where we can cooperate to raise the money necessary to maintain these, while creating the friendly environment we all love? Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Walter Kleinfeldter. I've lived in this community for over 30 years, ran a business for half of that time. Today, I am the customer that all these folks are talking about. And I find, in the last couple of years, more and more grief with you folks than I do with these folks. And as a matter of fact, when I have a parking problem, I don't blame them for taking my parking spot. I blame you for making it so damn difficult. You have taken the simplest process there is in community government, probably, and made it a rat's nest. I'm wondering if we aren't being penny wise and pound foolish. All of the things that I can say about that have been said, so I'll go on. It would seem that government is here to support the businesses that support them. It doesn't appear to be going that way. I'm really, really curious, if we eliminated everything, as the lady just said, what our pure cost would be to operate the facilities that we have. Are we earning, no, 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 we're not earning, that's right. The last three people that went in the paper said, "It's a losing business, this parking thing. We lose money." Excuse me, what is the definition of insanity? Do it again. Do it again, folks. See if we can lose some more money. Can I come downtown, run an errand later, come back for lunch, or an early dinner, and do a bit of window shopping, and enjoy a relaxed time? Not anymore. The number-one thing that we think of when we're coming downtown is, "Let's see, how long can we be down there before we have to start worrying about our car?" Ask the parking meter people. I've asked three so far, and they said, "Sorry, sir, very politely, we don't understand the rules either." Boy, that gives me a great deal of confidence in the way the program is set up. I think we've gotta go back to a zero-balance budget and say, "What does it cost to have parking in this city?" And excuse me for calling it a city, but that's what we're making out of it, a city, instead of a nice town. I travel a lot all over this country. I don't find anybody getting all upset about parking, but here, it's the major topic of discussion on the street with your friends. I am really ticked about my Sunday afternoon music that I can no longer spend time with, because, two hours, let's see, we're not going at 1:00, honey, we're going at 3:00. Then we can enjoy two hours of the music. This is a fact, folks, I'm not being...
Can you wrap it up, please?
I will. Don't ask a parking person, or parking meter person, please get those people trained, if nothing else, so they can help us. Tell us what to do. Make your signage more communicative. Take the heat off yourself.
Hello, I'm Angela Anderson. I'm a local business owner on Main Street. I must be wrong, but I, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but you were going over the budget, saying how much it's gonna cost, and how much you were gonna make, and it thought you said that it was only turning out to be a $1,900 revenue for the year, for the cost compared to the earnings? So, that's one thing I just wanted to ask you, 'cause that seems like $1,900, we're doing all this for that. I don't know. There's lots of towns locally that have free parking, not just the out-of-town places, the long-distance places that the other lady was talking about. You can go to Folsom, or, or old historic Folsom, or El Dorado Hills, and go shopping and out to lunch. It's not the money. It's not the money. It's not the $1. It was the same when it was the $1. It's, it's the same as the $2. It's not that, it's the psychology of it. It's the, I don't know what more to say about that than, it's not the money. It is the money when you tabulate the, the amount that people are spending, you know, like the gentleman did, talking about how much it costs a year. It is a lot of money to park. But for our tourists, for our guests, it's not the money. They could be millionaires, and it's not that. It's, it's just the psychology of it that's interrupting them. If we, if we could do anything, can we go back to Monday through Saturday, 8 to 5, and then drop Sundays again? If we could do that, keep the $2, but just do the regular hours and, and free Sundays? And if we can help downtown merchants and do another thing, is, can we add some signage on Highway 50, eastbound, westbound, saying, "Restaurants, shopping, gas, hotels, whatever, lodging here, you know, next three lights." That would be helpful. And if you do think about doing that common area maintenance thing, it needs to be based on amount of employees, I think, that are, if you're gonna do that, I just, right now, it's 600 bucks a year for, for parking for one space in the third parking lot, and the, sorry, the covered parking lot. And I just, ugh. I mean, I said it's not the money, I'm mainly talking about the tourists, but for locals, I, I just, I don't wanna pay anymore. That's, but anyway, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Meader, from the Placerville News Company. I wanted to thank the council and the committee for all their work they've done, trying to solve this problem of the parking. It's definitely a problem, there's definitely gotta be some issues. The thing that I have the most problem with is the extended time of the enforcement. We were, what, Monday through Saturday, 8 to 5? We've extended it, that extra two hours in the evening. I spend a lot of time downtown, and I've seen a drop in traffic downtown in the evenings. I'm not getting as much business, there's not as many people walking around. It's definitely hurting the businesses, it's hurting all of us, as well as it's giving downtown, we're gaining back our reputation as a terrible place to come because of the parking situation. Same thing with Sundays. Our revenue has dropped on Sundays, the traffic has dropped on Sundays. So, moving forward, trying to figure out this situation, trying to solve this problem, if one of the things that you could put on your top consideration was to bring the enforcement hours back down to where they were, I think that would go a long way. Alright, thank you.
Hello, I'm Ruth Michelson, and I own Placerville Art Gallery with my husband. So, many people come to Placerville to visit, and they initially think they're gonna be here for a couple of hours, but they really enjoy our town. And they realize that, gee, they have to choose between shopping or a meal, they can't do both. Two hours are up, they wanna go add some more time. They haven't yet registered, they haven't gotten into the system. I have asked repeatedly, so that when my customers ask, "How can I go to the machine and get in after I've had my free two hours? How do I add time?" No one has been able to provide that information to me. I need to have that written, so I can give it to my customers. I have lost sales, because I can't tell them, and they say, "Well, we have to leave." I have literally lost sales. So, that's number one. Number two, this woman on the committee, and thank you for being here, is she still here? Thank you. And I also wanna thank the committee and thank the council for your work on this. I know it's a thankless task. So, this parking program needs to pay for itself. We'll look at leased parking. Leased parking would give you your $60,000 and then some. You need 40 for the structure, you need 20 to put into a fund, that's what you need. It would more than pay for it. This other expense has been created, been created by, I don't know if you wanna say this group, but all of the expense of $100,000 for kiosks, $10,000 for maintenance, $10,000 for this, the ticket people, the ticket readers, this is a bureaucracy out of control. It is, it is, it is, in my opinion, bad government. It's not efficient. If it were a business, it would be out of business. So, we need to find a model, be creative, and really look at this leased parking, and it should be, in itself, self-sufficient. The leased parking is subsidizing this hourly parking. I mean, I've studied the line item, I went to the committee, the Parking Committee. I think by the time I got there, the train had left the station, and I was there a little too late for new input, because the response I basically got was, you know, "We've thought of that, we've looked at that, you know, this is what we're doing." The other thing I wanna add is, in some of the newspaper articles, and I know they're not always accurate, but repeatedly, there's been quotes about, "If you don't like this program, talk to the merchants, or ask, or talk to PDA." I'm a member of PDA. Look, there's city council, there is a committee, and then there happens to be PDA. The committee works under this Blue Ribbon Committee, worked under the city, reported to you. As a PDA member, we had like, a few minutes at one meeting, where some papers were kinda waved in front of us, where we said, "We need your approval." I don't think we had the adequate time to assess it, and we just said, "Oh, okay." But I really resent that this is being blamed on merchants and on PDA. Is my time almost up? Is it up? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Amanda Carrillo. I am a customer of a lot of these businesses, and I do come after 5, unwillingly know that it is free, because I grew up here, and that was just what we grew up with. You come downtown, it's free, you go and have fun, and you walk up, and you go back and forth. But my main concern is, how invasive is putting your license plate into a machine? We live in the world of technology, and how easy it can be for us. But some people might have a hard time remembering license plates, like a person with dyslexia or different disabilities, it might be very difficult for them. And then, they would be struggling at the machine, so therefore, they would leave their chance of burglary, or, you know, trying to, I don't know, someone tried to take their money or something. But how safety, how, how safety is it? These days, you can put a phone on something and copy it, or whatever. These days, you can put a phone on something and copy it, or whatever, if you're a really good hacker, you can go to these stations and get license plate numbers and find out where these people live easily. So, I would really like to question how that system works, and how hackable is it, and does it really provide the safety for $2 than we really need? Or is the actual one parking lot, two, three, or the row? Also, don't we have Eagle Scouts? Don't we have people who are volunteering, and also young rangers and police officers in our city, that could volunteer for hours to do the parking, you know, go around and see, and do the parking structure, and have tickets, and kind of get that program started? I think we can, I think we can get our Eagle Scouts, and I think we can get our local teens who are involved in the police academy or everything else to be part of the community. As a person who likes to have a couple beers here and there and wine during vacation from college, I've been in front of you before addressing my opinion on certain things, and I think the safety of having a license plate number put in the machine is too invasive for Placerville.
My name is Harmony Dancer, I've been a homeowner in this county for 42 years. I live, property rich, cash poor. There are thousands of people in this county that live on less than 12,000 a year, thousands more that live on less than 15, 18, and 20. This lady next to me tells me her fine was $45. That's not fair, realistic, that people have to give up food money to pay for your program. I come down to Main Street, I used to be five nights a week, my name's Harmony Dancer, you might have an idea of what's important to me. I know at least 100 world-class musicians in this county. It's not fair that we can't afford to go from establishment to establishment because we can't afford to buy a drink at each bar and pay the parking fees, let alone the fact that I wish I had a dollar for every SUV that is crowded out of space. And the other day, there were two on the line, there was no way I could get my Subaru into that space. You have to rethink this and get in touch with reality, because you're pushing people that love this county, love this street, pals is my cheers. I wish I had a dollar for every friend that I made, that I expect to have in my life till the day I die. We have funerals, we have memorial services there, we can't be running out, and then we can't take our car out of the parking stand and put it on the street? It's all one? You're literally killing the businesses of this county, and it is totally unfair. Shame on you.
My name is Jimmy Walker, I've been working on Main Street for, let's see, would it be eight years this October? I look around and I've seen, I've poured a drink for about three-quarters of these people, including some of yourselves up there. Been a long time. I have a question for Mr. Morris, how many leased parking spaces do you have? Do you have enough for everybody in this room that are available?
Okay.
Okay, well, I, I'm mostly on behalf of the people who work on Main Street, because when this 2013 recession happened, we were grinding to keep this city here. Everybody here was grinding. And now, I would say that you are punishing 85 to 90% of your revenue is us, you're, you're punishing these. This is a quarter of the turnout you would have had, the other three-quarters are working right now. We need to do something that addresses the people on Main Street. We can, we can do this, okay? We can, we can mutually benefit from each other here, okay? Work with us, please.
Good evening, council, I'm Tom Comston. Like Sue Rodman, I was a member of the ad hoc parking committee, kind of drafted into it, and, and I'm not ashamed of myself. I'm not ashamed of trying to do what everybody else is trying to do, which is make this city the best place it can be. The, the parking lot fairy is not going to maintain our parking lots. The parking lot fairy did not build the parking structure. As a matter of fact, the property owners on Main Street taxed themselves to build the parking structure. Now the city is stuck with maintaining that asset and maintaining the other assets. You have to, you have to generate enough revenue to balance the budget. Now, I've heard some good ideas tonight, I wish that in the seven meetings in three years that we had public meetings, that more of the people in this room had come out with their ideas, so that we could have considered them. But to, to come out now and say, why were we not informed, when there were seven public meetings over a three-year period, is, is really, it's Monday, Monday morning quarterbacking. It's clear that there are some things that can be changed and improved here, and I'm, I'm willing to do that. I, I put in my time at those meetings. I would like to challenge the people in this room to put in their time and come to the next meetings that will no doubt take place after this one. It feels good to come up here and wag a finger, it's a lot harder to come up with a solution. Now, we have a problem in this city, we have, we have assets that we do not have the money to maintain. No money is being put aside until now to replace or refurbish that parking structure, it's not going to last forever, folks. If the merchants want to step up and do that, that would be great. We had two members of the PDA on the committee. Now, I don't know what happens at the PDA, because I'm not a member of the PDA, but the PDA was represented at the committee, and business owners were the few people who did show up at the meetings. To conclude, I'd, I'd just like to urge people to, to, to avoid the Bob mentality and the us versus them attitude, we're all trying to solve this together. Every person in this room loves Placerville and wants it to succeed. So let's quit pointing fingers and get down to solutions. And I tried to do that along with some other people, we didn't get much help, but I'm willing to do it again, and I'd like to get a little more help this time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Schindler, I'm actually a new resident here in Placerville, I've only lived here two years.
Welcome to Placerville.
Thank you. Everyone that you see behind me, I couldn't name them with their first name if I had to, but I do know this, a lot of businesses in here brought joy to my heart, and a joy to a lot of people that are from out of this town. I've had this conversation with several people that don't live here, but do come here all the time. They've had to experience this, and they said, you know, if they want this to be San Francisco, then why don't they just go there and make it the city? It's not a city, it's a little town, and everyone that comes through here remembers the three signals that come through Placerville. And what do they do? They exit, and they visit every one of our merchants here. It has hurt tremendously. I do a, a lot of walking, because I'm able to, I mean, it's hop, skip, and a jump for me, so I don't have to worry about my car, but everyone else does. Recently, I've been confronted by many of our visitors, man, this sucks, where do I go to pay? Do you know where do I, walk and show them? I know that you guys can resolve this, I know that we're going to be able to work together as a community, and as someone that is a newbie, I'm expecting it. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Gary Graham, and a couple of issues came up for me. One is the pay-by-plate, I think is something that's pretty detrimental to parking downtown. If I, if I was able to come down for 15 minutes, I think people expressed that before, 15 minutes, five minutes to drop a dog off to be groomed and come back three hours later, I'm paying for parking. I'd like to see something happen with the parking to pay for the structures and those kind of things with community events, and do something like that, rather than make this a ghost town, because I, I'm afraid that's where we're headed.
Sue Taylor, joint owner and restorator of the Hangman and Herrick Buildings. I've used to work on Main Street probably 30 years ago, for three different businesses, and I never realized that what the main issue and main problem with the parking is downtown at that time was, number one, and it's always being mentioned, the problem started with business owners and employees were using spaces needed for customers and clients. I think we've gone way beyond trying to solve that problem, and I think we need to maybe step back a little and see what we can do to fix that problem. I can personally testify, in many circumstances, there's a major disconnect between the city council and Main Street. I have gone, I did go to some of the parking meetings, I've gone to a lot of meetings, you know me very well, you know more about me than probably most people. And it's not a very friendly relationship, which is sad, because Main Street is a treasure to the entire county, and there's many of us that fight to retain that spirit and feeling that we have downtown. So right now, and by the way, yes, I was at those meetings, and I felt very, there were some nice comments during that time, but I don't feel like any of my thoughts were going to be incorporated in that process. So, right now, this new parking policy is killing the atmosphere and the businesses of Main Street. Our daughter started her ice cream business, she's, was doing really great, and we saw it building, and noticed a drop-off when the parking rules started. And, and that said, and I've talked to many different merchants on Main Street, and they're feeling the same thing. I hope that was not your intent, and I, I really sincerely hope it wasn't, and if not, what are your future plans to resolve that? I had compiled some thoughts that I had considered, I actually passed them around and to get people kind of thinking of things that we could do to solve the problem, and I was going to turn it in tonight, but after listening to everybody and thinking about what our main problem was, I thought, maybe we should just suggest to solve that main problem is to provide inexpensive, cheap leased space for businesses that they can own 24/7, that are offered, and if they don't use them, then maybe require them per business and eliminate the rest of the program. That way, you have no expenses, all you have is the revenue from the leased parking spaces, and you could perhaps pay off all your old debts. So, thank you for your time.
My name is Dennis Thomas, I own a pharmacy downtown, and I am the chairman of the parking committee, and I'm also very involved with PDA and a lot of the merchants downtown. And I have to say, I can say this, I have a very soft spot for all those that are working hard, trying to make a living, and trying to make it happen in the system. I will, thank you. And I get that this is a serious challenge for those people. And as, as the chairman of the committee, I want to commit that we will work very hard to look at more creative solutions to solving this problem. I, I agree with most of you that there is some serious challenges for our community, for community members, for this parking system and the way it's working. And some of it, a lot of it, we couldn't foresee when we set up this parking district. And yet, we still had to work very hard at balancing a budget, and we worked really hard with the city to make that happen. And we were challenged with meeting the financial needs of the parking district while trying to provide the best possible parking district we could. And it was, we had very little input, we did market it a lot, we did tell a lot of people, merchants specifically, that we were willing to hear everything they had to say. And honestly, very few people spoke up. Very few. A lot of your owners, a lot of the owners of these businesses didn't speak up. A lot of, now, employees didn't have the opportunity to participate because it was sent out to merchants. It was sent out to, it was sent out to primarily merchants. There were some public announcements, but there wasn't much. And so I believe that the merchants didn't step up to the plate and, and really participate in this process. Some did. I could count probably, at one meeting, we had as many as six. And that was it. Some meetings, there was less than that, but six was the most we ever had. And we notified a lot of people, in a lot of different ways that we had, the avenues that we had to notify. And what I look forward to is a redo on this, to really work with the merchants that want to step up to the plate and participate in the process moving forward. Because now that we realize that there's this big challenge, and I don't think we realize that, there's always been this challenge, every time we talk about parking, this happens, I promise you, this happened 10 years ago. We had this same situation. And yet, we worked through it, we solved the problems that came up, and things settled down, and it worked well. I think Placerville, we got through it, I think it's thriving. And now, we have another challenge ahead of us, I think we'll work through this challenge, and I think we'll come to a solution. We do need, are you going to turn me off yet? Oh, thank you.
But you should wind it up.
Okay, I will. We do need participation, we do need people wanting to contribute to this solution so that this doesn't happen again. And I look forward to that opportunity. And I do want to see this through in a meaningful way, that, I promise you, not everybody will enjoy the solutions, and not everybody will be happy, but I think we can move in a direction that works better for everybody, so thank you.
Hi, my name's Neil, I spoke at the last meeting. Not much to add, but I'll reiterate what I mentioned the last time, that parking structure, the spaces are very small. Maybe they were made for a horse, I don't know, but you, I don't know how much revenue you guys lose by people not parking in those spaces, because they can't fit. And somebody mentioned earlier about the over-the-line, which sounded kind of funny, but it's not. And so, you end up a domino effect, getting pushed over, those people leave, you're sitting there, and you get a ticket. But, but that's not the main issue, the main issue is the revenue that, that you guys are losing from people not being able to park in those spots, or running a risk of getting their car dinged, and then having to deal with that. The other issue is, some of these meters that you pay at are hard to, they are hard to work. The one by Kerry House, if, in the morning, the sun hits the display, you can't read it, you need Popeye arms to push the buttons to make them work, and so maybe you guys can, can address those issues. I mean, obviously, I don't think many people are advocating to, to park for free, I mean, we realize we need the money, but, but it's all about the execution of how you do that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eden Halbert, and I'm a resident of Placerville for the last 10 years, and I, I moved here from San Francisco, where parking is a whole other level of hell. But I, I love this town, and I interact with Main Street in three ways. One is, just as a customer and resident, I've always loved downtown, I make every effort to shop locally all year round, because that's important to me, that's what I value. And I will say, the parking makes it difficult psychologically, more than, more than financially, because I'm lucky, I don't have to come for eight hours and really worry about it as a financial expense. I interact, second of all, as a member of Gold Country Artist Gallery, where I hear on every shift I have worked since this was implemented, I hear from people anecdotally, you know, as they're shopping and passing through, oh gosh, you know, I'll, I'll have to think about that and come back, or, I'll catch you guys next time, because they're worried about their car and they're going. And again, it's this anxiety about the, the parking running out, more than the idea of $2. Or it's the hassle of going back to the car and then coming back to the store, people just aren't going to do that. The more roadblocks you put in their way, the harder it is. The more roadblocks you put in their way, the harder it is for them to want to be here and to shop here. And the third way I interact with Main Street is that I have a home-based business, and I'm lucky therefore that when my clients come, their parking is not an issue for them. However, many of them are coming from out of town, and they're asking me things like, "Oh, you know, is there someplace nice to stop for lunch?" Or, "I want to do some shopping, where should I go?" And I routinely, you know, I want to direct them toward Main Street, because I think it's a great place for all of those things. But I also have to then warn them about the parking. And I, you know, I've noticed that that changes things for people. So, the last thing I want to say is that, we've had several people up here from the committee, it sounds like they worked really hard and diligently, and I appreciate that. But I didn't know anything about any of this process as a resident here until it was implemented. Right? So, if we're looking for creative solutions to real problems, why wouldn't we want more input from more people? And yes, you have to structure that to rein people in to make sure it's not just a venting fest, which, you know. But at the same time, you know, this came as a surprise to a lot of people. So, I think that is very, you know, normal for us. It's not just that we hate change, it's that we had no part in that process. We had no ownership of those decisions, and we're being met with these, you know, new requirements with no warning and no adjustment period mentally or otherwise. So, anyway, I would encourage that if you're going to go through these kind of processes in the future, more input would be a little bit better. Thank you.
My name is John Butterbaugh. I've lived in Placerville, and I've lived on this side of the lake for 22 years, and lived up to the lake for 12. Just some observations. One, has any of the council members ever been to Ventura? How recently?
Actually, I have a place. Less than a year ago, and I have a trip planned in a few weeks.
The reason I ask that, because I was down in February, they have a very user-friendly parking system. And it's central, it's got numbers. You don't have to remember your license plate. You take your number up to the machine, you punch in the machine. If I want two hours, if I want three hours, I pay for it. So, if you give the first two hours free, then they think they're going to be spending time downtown, they need to put the money in at that time, okay? So, maybe I lose a buck. Maybe it was short-circuited on there. Another comment is, on Main Street, I don't see one handicap parking. Yes, there's handicap parking in the garage, there's Viarians, but there's none on Main Street. How come? You know, we've got a lot of handicap people around here, too. Another thing is, I don't see why you have, first of all, it's gone from five to seven. I think you're hurting a lot of the merchants downtown. Most of the businesses I see close down, but the restaurants are open. And, you know, that's traditionally been kind of a happy hour period. So, maybe you're losing tax revenue by having that extra time. The last thing that I want to say is that I enjoy this town. It's very similar to the one I grew up in. I only have one minute, I haven't spoken for three minutes. Your timer's off. Anyway. Anyway, I grew up in a small community down in the San Joaquin Valley. And parking, well, they had parking meters back in those days, because I'm so old, but Sunday parking was free. And I still think that Sunday parking downtown should be free. You have a lot of people from out of town, you have people from all over the world, all over the United States, coming to Placerville to see various things. Maybe seeing Lake Tahoe, coming down here, maybe going out to see the Gold Bug Park. I think that Sundays ought to be free. Thank you.
Response on the handicap parking?
Good evening. My name is Les Russell from Placerville. And I've been here so long that Main Street used to be also Highway 50. And when I went to high school here, there was only one high school in the whole county. Anyway, my wife and I own a building downtown, and we have several tenants. Two of them have spoken tonight, and I know they're both affected to some degree with the new regulations. I understand the need to raise money to keep the facilities maintained, but don't ever abuse that. Don't try to use that as a cash cow to raise money that goes beyond what you might need to maintain the facilities, and you're probably really not doing that. I only have three recommendations. I don't want to repeat what a lot of people have said. One, I think adding Sundays to the program was a mistake. There's quite a few businesses on the Main Street that aren't open on Sundays, so I don't think it's critical for Sundays. The second thing is I think you ought to roll back the seven o'clock cutoff to at least six, because most of the businesses on Main Street, other than the eating and drinking facilities, probably are closed by six. I think that would be a more appropriate time, or even go back to five. The third comment, and it's really not a parking comment, well, it is in a sense. I won't park on the lower level of the parking garage in a compact space, because usually they're, they're just not wide enough. There's Suburbans, and there's one-ton pickups, and there's, if anybody had a Humvee, they had probably parked there also. You know, I think that the next time you re-stripe, get rid of the compact spaces. They're not working, and, you know, I won't park there, because I don't want my cars to be dinged, you know? And I've figured out how to get around the double dipping. You know, I come down in the morning to look at the building, to check the building, and it might take me 15 minutes or to do something, and I'll come back that afternoon to do something else. I just bring a different car.
I've been here a couple times before to talk about this. And the only thing I really have to add tonight is that the capturing of the license plate numbers on the cars absolutely does not work unless you want to hire some attendants to check people in and out. Because I used to make two or three visits downtown. I might come down for coffee and a paper, and then I might come down to pick something up at the cleaners, and then I might come down for a meal for in the evening, and I'm scared to do that. I'm afraid to do that. So, I have been, ever since these new regulations, making sure I only come downtown once a day. And that means, yes, you've lost the revenue from my taxes for those businesses. And I would also like to point out, as somebody else mentioned, that there really is no security on the online system. Once you get a ticket and have a sequence number, you can go into that online system, and you can backward and forward from your sequence number and see every license plate number out there. So, you know, if you're going to do that, you're going to have to hire some more IT personnel to place some security on that system, so that stuff is, people's license numbers aren't out there in the public.
I'm just a local resident, and I just want to add something to what she just said. I bring my dog into Canines on Main to get groomed, and there is a yellow sidewalk right in front of the shop, but a lot of times, there's someone else parked there. So, I need to find another spot and park and bring my dog in. I'm in there for maybe five minutes, drop him off. They call me maybe three hours later. If somebody's already taken my license plate, I'm, when I come back, three hours later, I'm eligible for a ticket. The reality is, I've only, excuse me, I've only been here for 10 minutes. So, I just wanted to add that.
My name is Linda Irwin. I was not going to speak with you this afternoon or this evening, as it's turning out. There's a couple things that I have questions about. I've been up here since 1978. I've known Patty Burrell almost all that time. I take pride if I see people on Main Street that look like they are visitors from another country, Japan, Italy, China, I don't care where. If I see them that they're looking like they have a question for a suggestion on where to go eat, where to maybe go shop to pick up something that would remind them that they've been to Hangtown, I always suggest the hardware store. I suggest probably three or four restaurants. If they want to get a drink, there's one place to go. Two places, actually, three places. If you want a glass of wine, there are those. Some people want to listen to music. I don't know how to explain your parking right now to somebody from a foreign country that is coming here because they've heard of Hangtown, they've heard of the Hangman, and our gold history. If you can explain it on a sign, more power to you.
Well, thank you very much for all those comments. There were some questions. I'm not sure we're going to be able to get to every single one of them. We might have to put out some sort of thing. But Cleve, would you like to take a first swing at them?
Actually, I think there's only a few here that I think that I, I'll do my best, okay? My mic's not working well. I'll do the best. First one, Angela Anderson asked about the $1,900 revenue. Yes, that is what we're showing, a revenue over expenditures, but that's covering, we've covered all of the costs of the program. We're not trying to make any money on this, but we've covered all of our costs, and we've been able to set aside the money we need for deferred maintenance and for capital improvements in the future. So, our goal is not to make money. Our goal is to be able to pay for the program, and with a $1,900 revenue at the end of the day, that's pretty well balanced. That's about where we want to be. One answer, the gentleman, about the private parking on Reservoir Street, okay? Those are private lots. We have no control over those lots. Those are owned by private property owners who have determined, and I will mention, I think there's at least one or two of those that are in this room tonight that own those lots, and they have the right to do what they want with them. I don't control those. I control the alleyway, which is probably a 15-to-20-foot-wide easement that I have, but I do not own those parking, those private parking lots. I have no control over what people do. Now, could I buy those and turn those into leased parking? I suppose I could, if that was something that we felt was a need in the city. But I have no control over those, over those private parking lots on Reservoir Alley. Those are privately owned, and what those businesses decide to do with them, if they use them for the building that they own, to let their employees park there, or if they rent those out or lease those out to other patrons, that's up to that property owner, what they want to do. The next time, the gentleman asked if we had, asked about leased parking spaces, Dave, do you have the total number that you can give me on that?
192.
That's total leased currently. And we do have available spaces. To my knowledge, we've never turned anyone away, because we do not have spaces. We may not be able to provide the space in the exact lot that you want it, but I know that we do have spaces available, and we've never turned anyone away that has asked for a leased parking space.
Excuse me, Cleve.
Yes.
Approximately, how many total parking spaces are there in the parking district? Approximately?
Oh, wow.
I know, oh, I asked the wrong person for an approximation, but a ballpark.
Do you know that number, Dave? I want to say...
I want to say approximately 200.
No, leased parking. I'm talking total number, total parking spaces.
Not just leased, but total parking spaces.
I don't have that number.
I think it's over 600, but I'm not...
So, it's...
Around 600.
Around 600. So, it's less than 650 or 700, and probably more than 550. So, just to give you an idea, all of the, the parking, the total number of parking spaces available for customers, if no one parked in those parking spaces, would be approximately 600. Currently, almost 200 of those are leased. So, just to give you an idea of kind of the magnitude of it, there aren't 1,000 parking spaces, not 10,000. It's about 600 parking spaces. And the parking district runs generally from right around Jack Russell up to Cedar Ravine, generally, is the parking district. Because that includes all the parking lots and the parking structure and Main Street. So, basically, it's Main Street, but not all the way down Main Street. Okay, just to give you a little factoid there. Okay, go ahead.
Those were the questions...
Mr. Volker, oh, no, that was, his question was about leased parking, so we covered...
Were there other questions that the council heard that you'd like me to answer?
There were quite a few comments about the lines, and I, you talked to me about that earlier, that you have plans to...
One of the first projects we want to do as this funding starts to become available for it is to re-stripe the garage. I've already talked to our community services director, Steve Yule, who would be in charge of that, and that's one of the things we're planning to do.
Now, it's important to note that when you re-stripe a parking lot and you make those spaces bigger, which I would all be in all favor for, I drive a Honda Coupe, and the door's kind of long, and I, frequently, I'm doing, you know, I should do yoga to get out of the car. But there'll be less parking spaces in the parking garage.
Fewer.
Fewer.
Not less.
There'll be less parking spaces. Fewer parking, whatever.
Fewer.
Fewer parking spaces in...
Poor grammar.
Thank you. Fewer parking spaces in the garage. So, that's an important thing, because parking is precious. We've heard this over and over again. And so, there's going to be fewer spaces. So, those are just things we all, these are all the little tidbits that we have to deal with. So, when we come in and say, "Well, we should make the parking lot spaces bigger," I'm in favor of that. I think it's a great idea. However, it does take away, because if you make each space marginally larger, you will end up having fewer parking spaces.
We will have fewer, but we will be able to use them.
Yes, okay. All right. That's true. That is absolutely true, and I'm not arguing that police. I'm just saying there will be fewer of them.
The question about handicap parking on Main Street, you're right, there is none on, actually, on-street handicap parking. The reason for that primarily is because of the space requirement for that. You would have to cut into the sidewalk to create that wide enough space for that, and therefore, we've looked at that and determined not to do that, but create the handicap parking on, in the garage.
Now...
Now, I need to note that a person with a handicap placard can park in any space except for like a 30-minute or a 15-minute parking space. They can't park, the commercial or the 15-minute time, they can't park indefinitely. They can park for 15 minutes, but any of the two-hour parking, a handicap, a person with a handicap placard can park in any of the two-hour parking spaces...
All day.
All day, without paying. That's, that's the law, so...
Time for comments? First of all, I'd like to thank those that are still here for coming. Believe it or not, I requested this agenda item about four weeks ago. Sadly, six, before, four or six months ago, however, there was probably six people in this room when the council took action on this and started down this path with the program that we currently have in effect. And I appreciate all of your comments, that, all of those of you that offered to get involved, and thank those folks that were involved. This particular change is probably the third parking change that I've seen, the second that I've been involved in as a council member, and I clearly remember when they removed the parking meters on Main Street. And those people had the same fear to have that done away with that you all have with what we have this evening. So, this is not going to go away. We're going to have to come up with more community input, and if you don't show up at the next meetings that I suspect we're going to schedule, then you really do have to accept the outcomes of the refinements that I think are going to be coming to the program. Now, Mr. Mayor, I don't know, we've had about two hours of input from the public on this, and we could have a very long discussion.
Let's don't.
Okay. So, what I would do is, the one common theme that I've heard is that Sundays seems to be the huge...
the huge issue, and having taken it also to, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. is a huge issue.
Five to seven.
Excuse me, from 9:00, let's see, 9:00 a.m. to...
Five to eight.
Eight, excuse me, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So, the issue was not to really take an action on this this evening, so how, well, I'm going to ask the city manager and the city attorney. My concern is that if we go back through the same process that developed the program that you are so adamantly opposed to, we could be looking at several months, very easily. Is there any possibility that the city manager could have the authority to temporarily abolish the Sunday enforcement program and revert the existing hours of operation to 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
What about five? How about five?
Now, we didn't yell while you were talking.
I'm yelling.
So, first of all, let's find out if we can even do that, because I'm worried about leaving these businesses, and remember, I'm the one that asked for this. I understand that we got this wrong. It wasn't intentional. It's a huge problem, and as you realize, there's, there's a lot of private property issues, there's just a lot to making sure that this pays for itself a proper, a proper amount, and we do it safely. Mr. Morris, Mr. Driscoll, is that even possible this evening?
No, I don't think... We can direct staff, but we can't take action.
Okay. Mayor and council, I think the answer is that we, we could not do that tonight.
Right.
But we could schedule it for the next meeting and allow you to do that at the next meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
And that would be my request.
Can we direct staff? Tonight? Yes.
I just, okay.
See, or no?
I just, I just remembered the answer to a couple of questions, at least one I would like to make clear. We do not have special parking spaces. When I come downtown to either do my own business, get a cup of coffee, go to have lunch, buy something on Main Street, or go into the city to sign something or talk to Cleve or talk to staff about something, I do that at my own peril, and I frequently have to sit there and go, well, I was downtown having coffee, and I went into the time zone, usually it's before then, but after that, and I go, well, they maybe got my thing. In fact, the other day, I had to do that, and I went in to see Cleve afterwards. It was after 2:00, and I said, "You know what? I'm going to dump $2 in the machine," because I had, I didn't know if my number had been out there. The thing with the license plates, the license plate issue, that, the, two things. One is that these are systems that are used in a lot of different places without incident. The other thing, too, is if anybody wants to get your license plate, they will just walk up behind your car and write it down. There's nothing that, they, why go to a machine and do some hocus-pocus with a computer when you can go and literally walk up and down Main Street and copy people's license plate numbers down? If you were so inclined. So, I understand private property, I'm a civil libertarian, I don't like to give anything of mine away, but I think that we shouldn't maybe start to get worked up about license plate numbers, because they are on the backs of our cars, and they are visible all the time we are out in public. So, I wouldn't get too worked up about that. There was one other thing that, but I can't remember it now, so.
Do you have comments? You want to comment?
Thank you. Like to echo the comments here tonight, that we appreciate everyone coming out in your comments, that this, you know, I, I understand people are angry and, and are upset. This doesn't have to be a contentious issue. This is not an us versus you. We're all in this together. We all love our town. We all want what's best for her. And sometimes, you try something, and you need to adjust it, and that's where we are tonight. And so, I think it's really important to, to understand that. This whole process, the last couple of months, you know, has been about understanding what the challenges are before us. I think someone mentioned that, I think Johnny mentioned that, that it's, that it's important to, you know, you roll something out, you take a look at it, you understand what needs to be tweaked, and then we come together and we employ creative, intelligent, rational thought and solve the issues that make sense, and there will be some that, that are not as important or that we can't mitigate, but we can get really close. I have no doubt that all of us coming together, listening to each other, can tweak this program that really works for our community, that works for the fabulous tourists that we welcome every day, and that also puts money aside to maintain our facilities. There were a lot of really great thoughts expressed tonight, and I look forward to exploring that more. I would also like to echo the thanks to the parking committee, and to acknowledge that they are community volunteers that were tasked with an inordinate challenge, and I think that's really, really important to understand. They're, you know, all of you, and they, this, this monkey was on their back, and they worked really hard with our city staff to find a program that worked, and they were tasked with making sure that, number one, number one task is that our community had the adequate parking that they needed to enjoy Main Street. And that's always our number one goal, to make sure that our local residents can go town and enjoy our, our town, and frequently, because they, they do, they are the bread and butter downtown. Also, that our tourists can have adequate places to park. And also, they were tasked with making sure that we are finally good stewards of our, of our public facilities and are setting the money aside to maintain them, because we haven't always been good stewards of that. And we're drawing a line in the sand now and saying we need to change that, so. Oh, excuse, no, I'm, I'm sorry, there's, it's not public comment here. So, I want to acknowledge their work. So, Mark, I sure appreciate what you said, and if that's the way we need, you know, need to go to, to try a few things, that's, to suspend Sunday and 5:00 p.m. in two weeks, you know, just for now. I understand that, but I also want to make sure that we honor the work of the parking committee and have full public participation and do this correctly. We, you know, it doesn't have to take a long time, we need to get this solved, we need to do it quickly, no doubt about it, we need to get, I'm, I'm not talking five months, not talking six months, I'm talking, you know, within a month, but we can get community meetings, we can get this, we, we know the challenges, we understand them, I, you know, I think we understand them, but it's just coming up with solutions that make sense. And so, I want to make sure that we have that process in place, because this is not an agenda item tonight, it would not be appropriate to take action tonight. So, anyway, thank you for working with us, and I have no doubt that we can make this work.
Hold on, hold on. We're not, we're not done. I mean, you can leave if you'd like, but I mean, we're not quite done. Patty?
I, I think what Wendy was kind of intimating, and I, I want to take up on this, I'm not sure that we should make this rash decision to try to solve this by next meeting. Dennis and Tom and Sue all indicated that they're more than happy to revisit this, and I think that that's the way to go, because we do a Band-Aid, and then it's like, do we do another Band-Aid, and do we, you know, a lot of the, if you paid attention to what Cleve said, that we're, the parking committee considered, they were shot down on a lot of the things that they really had proposed and wanted to do, and so, they had to try to appease the merchants, some of the merchants, they had to, you know, and, and at the same time, like I say, generate this income. One lady said something about, "Why don't we go back to the way it was? It worked well." It didn't work well. We had to, we, the city council and the city, wrote off $100,000 that they went in the hole for, to start over, and we, we just don't have that kind of money, and that's what we're trying to remedy, is making this thing pay for itself. So, I think maybe some of the, by going through all this, maybe some of the folks who objected to some of the recommendations that the parking committee proposed, they might think twice about it and, and how to do this. Anyway, I just, I'm, I'm not in favor of trying to put a Band-Aid on it for, in next meeting. I, I really think that we need to establish some, to have the parking committee get back, and I don't know how to, I don't know what to recommend timewise. I guess I'm going to ask Cleve how we're going to go about redoing this.
Well, assuming what I'm hearing from council direction is to have the parking committee take this back and relook at it, consider all the information that we've heard tonight. We can get them together as, as quickly as possible, we will pull them and see when they can meet. I would think before the end of the month, they could meet for the first time, and hopefully, I, I don't know if they'll come up with all the solutions then, they may need a couple of meetings to, to get all the solutions. The other thing that we would do is bring back to them, you know, what changes, how that changes their budget, then when they change that. So, we have to have all that information available to them, so that they can consider that and then put a, bring a recommendation for the city council. But I would think that we could hopefully meet by the end of August, as quick as possible.
There's a fifth Tuesday in August, isn't there?
There is.
Yeah, which is often, this, this space is available on a fifth Tuesday that we often use for neighborhood chats, so that might be a really good time for the community to come together to, to tackle this.
Okay.
Could be.
All right. I have, I have...
Pardon.
I agree with the ideas of putting, having these short gap measures, although it seems to me that the Sunday fix would actually be something that would be reasonably, reasonable to implement, because you're not taking a day out, you're just smushing all the other days together, there's no longer a rogue day in the middle, and so, Sunday, conceivably, it's not going to impact your revenue, because you're basically just swapping out, you know, you're just saying, "Sunday will just not be a day when we'll do that." I mean, I don't know if there would be a huge revenue. That's the only thing I was concerned with.
That's a good point.
If you, if you start to monkey around with the hours, the other thing, too, is some of our signs have the hours on them.
Exactly.
But I don't think there's anything out there that actually says Monday through Sunday and then like something else. So, so Sunday could be something that we could implement to show the good folks here that we are, are listening to them, and, no, 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 don't, don't applaud, don't applaud. Thank you, but don't. And it's something we could do in the short term that I, that would show good faith on our part. I don't want to admit that we made a mistake. We may have not come up with the best thing here, but I don't know if it's a mistake, it's just something that maybe, you know, the, the practical implementation of it wasn't as good as it could have been. The other thing, too, that's out there is, one of the things that's different from before is we're, is enforcement, and any kind of a parking program is going to have enforcement. And so, if, if you think there's going to be a parking program where there's never enforcement, well, that's just not a practical thing. So, many of the problems that were described here could have been a problem under the old system, the, the license plates and all would have had no bearing, especially if you're parking on Main Street, and that was an issue of enforcement. So, there's still, there's a lot of thorny stuff out there. The other thing, too, is, I just want to let you all know that I don't think about this when I show up and sit in this chair. I've been in Cleve's office, and I know we all have been in Cleve's office, and trying to figure a way, out a way, kind of rub the edges off and kind of round off the, the program as it exists today, recognizing that we could come up with something different. How we could do that, to, to, we, we hear the complaints. Like I said, I do the Rayleigh's test, I go to Rayleigh's, and I don't get past the milk. I'm not even sure where the milk is anymore right now, but I can't get past the milk. And, and, and I hear about this, and I'm in Cleve's office, and we're talking about it, and Cleve has told me, "Well, we could do this, and we can do that." Now, I, we can't tell you what we're talking about, because then everyone would know, and then they would just go and kind of game the system. So, we have to be careful, but we are thinking about it, we are currently trying to do some stuff about this. This is not something that is lost on us, and so, I just want to let you know that. Yes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
So, instead of like the ghost, this is Dave saying, can we not go back to Sundays only?
Well, that's what I just, that's what I just said.
No ghost?
No ghost.
But no ghost?
But Sunday. Yeah, because then you would be taking a whole day out somewhere else. You don't need a ghost if you just, boy, wouldn't listen to us. You won't need that day if you'd go to no implementation on Sunday, which I think is something we can achieve without too much heartburn, I'm sure.
Do we still need a ghost?
No, we do not need a ghost. The other thing, too, is the people that are currently enforcement are not employees of the city, they are under contract, I don't know how much money they make, they certainly don't get benefits from us, so...
Do they have a list?
The contractor who bid on the project.
Are they here to stay?
No.
So, we can get rid of them, or please?
They're under contract, I imagine we would have to abide by our contract, or we would get ourselves in serious trouble. We can deal with that. Anyway, okay.
There's, there's a lot to deal with, that's why I'm suggesting...
So, anyway, I, we're going to have a meeting.
Clarification, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is it the intent of the, of the majority of the council to have, to direct staff to bring back the elimination of Sunday enforcement in two weeks?
As an interim measure, based, and then we will do whatever comes back from the committee, but as an interim measure, that would be my recommendation.
I would be in favor of that.
I would say yes.
Okay.
With, with the direction also, obviously, to convene the parking committee as soon as possible to address this whole program in its entirety and bring it back solutions.
And, and the other thing, too, I'd like to see the parking committee, and they did look at this, but they have to seriously look at two models, I think, besides the enforcement model, and the kind of what we're doing today model. And that is a model that creates or assesses what the cost of maintenance, because the city's interest is in maintenance of its facilities and its property. Parking is something that is a different kind of an issue, but if we were to look at a model that said, "Let us find out how much it would cost if we put an assessment on the properties that are within the parking district, just like when they built the parking, how much that would cost per unit, per month, or per year."
Right.
And then, then you get to a market-based system. That's what private property owners, that's what folks on Placerville Drive and, and the others do. The other one would be one, and I'm less in favor of this, because I think the cost would be astronomical, what it would cost to have the merchants shoulder that responsibility.
I don't think that's...
Yeah, but I, well, but we need to know both. I mean, we need to know what the numbers are like, we need to understand that. That's called data, that's called looking at options. And then the one is kind of refining the existing parking structures, you know, the system that we have today. Okay?
Can I make a couple of follow-up comments?
Sure.
Thank you for your support, thank you for your clarification on the enforcement issues and the license plate issues, and you're absolutely right, that's flying right out there every time you step in the car. First of all, I'd like to thank the parking committee again for their hard work, and I hope that they will stick with this process again. For those folks, unfortunately, we've lost a considerable amount of our audience, but it's obvious, the, very important to get involved when we do have these next hearings that are going to refine the permanent solutions to these, these issues. Cleve has been very responsive in the last two to three weeks in doing his best to make adjustments to the system and how it is applied out there, working with the new enforcement folks to use some common sense in what's going on, and I want to say, you might not believe it, but the number of citations have gone down considerably. Anybody that sees a parking enforcement contract employee out there that is not appropriate for our Main Street, I would ask you to please not hesitate to call Mr. Morris. If you can't get ahold of him, Mr. Warren is on the first floor. It is not appropriate to have a contractor or a city employee out there behaving, whether it's their dress or their manner or their, their approach to a member of the public. I would not, and I'm sure my colleagues and the city manager, we do not accept that as appropriate behavior for our town. So, please, make the phone call, stop by, see either one of these two gentlemen on that. The issue about adjusting all the stalls and just, so that, I know it's a pain, I don't know my own license plate number, and I've had the forerunner for 11 years, and I don't have it memorized, so it's writing on my scratch pad.
Mine's in my wallet.
It's not going to be any consolation, but I do remember back in '07, we had the same amount of complaints about having you remember the stall number.
Right.
Two numbers or three at the most. People were just adamantly opposed to stall numbers. I had to walk back to my stupid stall.
Right.
So, it's, and it goes back to what the mayor has mentioned, there's got to be some way to enforce this. So, again, it looks like this will come back in two weeks to try and get some temporary relief, and then we will be already digging in to set up the next public hearings, and please continue to be involved.
Is that it?
Do we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, what?
If I might.
Yes.
I don't know if you're ready to conclude this item or not, before you go to the next item.
Desperately, but go ahead.
I just want to make it clear that although you cannot take action on this item as such, you can give staff direction to put this item on for consideration at the next council meeting. And I would suggest that if you're going to limit it to just the Sunday parking issue, that that's, that direction be given to staff. Now, it takes a majority of the council to concur in that, to put an item on a future agenda.
Right.
So that would take some sort of a formal head count, if you will.
Would you like to?
I'll make that motion.
And you can do it now or you can do it under the future items.
Let's just do it now, these people want to go home.
The other, other comment I would make is that if you do, at the next meeting, decide that you are going to not have enforcement on Sundays, um, it would take an amendment to the ordinance, which would take about 45 days to become effective. However, the council does have the power to direct staff to suspend enforcement, and my suggestion would be if you go in that direction, have staff suspend enforcement until the parking committee finishes with its recommendations, so you can do the ordinance amendment all at one time.
So that would be my motion to, to suspend.
What he, what he said, okay, I'll second that, all right. And do we have a majority of the council to do this? See, yes?
See?
Okay.
Sorry, yes.
All right. Uh, thank you, thank, thank you. And, 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 and right now, until all your friends on Main Street, unless something changes, we have a fifth Tuesday, fifth Tuesday in August, we will have a parking meeting the fifth Tuesday of August at 6:00. Write it down, you heard it from the mayor, do it, okay? And I'm going to come to that meeting and there better be a lot of people here, there better be a lot of people here, and I know there will be. Okay, anyway, all right, we are going to, um, we are going to get about a five to 10-minute break to allow for the mass exodus that I certainly know is going to happen, even though we have a very exciting agenda here that is jam-packed with really interesting stuff that the city does. But, uh, so we're going to take about a five, 10-minute break. We'll bring the, uh, meeting back into session. Uh, let's see, closed session report.
Is your mic on?
What's wrong with our microphone? Oh, I'm sorry, there's nothing wrong.
Tonight in closed session, the council did not take action on the claim of Kim Johnston, nor did the council take action on the claim of Mark and Gina Hale. However, four members of the council were present, council member Wilkins being absent, and with respect to the claim of the Golden Plaza LLC, the council rejected that in a unanimous 4-0 vote. And with respect to the claim of Amy Quijada, the council also rejected that in a unanimous 4-0 vote.
Thank you, sir. All right. You know, we've been here for two and a half hours. And right now, we are adopting our agenda, so can I have a motion?
Set up.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We mercifully have no ceremonial matters. I'm going to ask, Sue might want to say something, Jackie, public comment, brief non-agenda items, blah, 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 yada, yada, yada. Does anybody want to say anything?
Do we have any written?
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Well, no, she's going to, we can do it the other way around, I'm sure. We are going to do it the other way around. Go ahead.
I don't think it's on, is it on now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Sue resident, resident, uh, Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm sure, I lived here since 1989. Um, and I wanted to let everybody know, because I know that a couple of times people have asked, is there any way for people to get hazardous trees removed from private property that's not going to hit the road or the power lines? And yes, there is. The county is offering a grant for hazardous tree removals for limited income seniors, and there is a number to call, it's contact the Community Development Services Housing and Community Economic Development Program at our wonderful 530 area code, 621-5159. They will take down, um, there's a lim, an income limit on it, so it is for low-income people, but those are the people that have been saying they don't have any way to get this done. Well, now there is a way to get it done. You can get two trees, two hazardous trees removed from your property. They need to be greater than 10 inches in diameter and greater than 20 feet in height and within 300 feet of and pose a structural threat to the residents and be reasonably accessible for equipment and machinery. So this is a, a Cal grant, Cal FIRE grant, and it goes up to, they can do 42 trees, so it would be who, if anybody who's got a couple of trees they need to get out, to give them a call. Now, number two. I received an email on August 1st and permission to share it with the city council reply on August 2nd, and it says, Dear Sue and Committee, meaning the Measure H L Committee, I have owned for, a four-unit income property for eight years on Easy Street where Placerville Drive crosses with Green Valley. I have tried to improve the property and keep it neat. Upon purchase, that section of Placerville Drive from US 50 to Green Valley was in a sad state. Now, eight years later, it is even worse, and it is both embarrassing and depressing. My neighbor believes that we are in the quiet section of Placerville and are thus ignored. Why, they even put homeless shelters right here a couple of years back without even bothering to let the residents know. I could never figure out why Placerville Drive did not deserve better. It's probably one of the main streets visited with Home Depot, the movie theater, the car dealerships, the fairgrounds. It's even got the name of the city in its name, and it eventually turns into Main Street in downtown Placerville. I am delighted that you and your committee have recognized this and put that section in a first priority standing for road repair. Your ability to recognize this and take a stand for it are much appreciated by myself and all the other residents, and I'm sure businesses as well, and will always be remembered. Looking forward to a smooth grand entrance into Placerville from Highway 50. Thank you, Richard Struck.
Thank you.
Well done, nice.
You should have read that earlier, Sue, I think, yeah.
You didn't have public comments earlier.
Oh, I know, dang it. You try to think of this stuff, okay.
You know what, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to suggest that maybe the information, I know it's been in the paper, but maybe the information Sue just shared with us about the trees?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It was, it was in the paper, it was in the Democrat.
It was, but I'm thinking, should we, maybe we should do it on our, our website, you know, share with?
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay. Anybody else want to, okay. Do we have any written correspondence?
We do.
Great.
Uh, and if it's all right, I'll just read it quickly, it's very short. Uh, the service club signs that used to be on the welcome to Placerville signs are in the Mar House at Goldbug Park. Please have them restored back onto the welcome signs, thanks, thank you, the Lions Club sign, Rodeo sign, Quon sign, et cetera. This was from, uh, Michael Drobish, ask this be read into the record tonight.
Thank you.
Are we contemplating putting it back on the?
Uh, we will look into it, I've talked to Mr. Yule a little bit about that, there's some real, I guess, controversy regarding that, so.
I had a lady talk to me about a year ago about it, and she was trying to find them, and so, yeah.
We've got them hidden in the gold mine.
They're hidden in the gold mine, yeah. So we'll, we'll look into it.
They're safe.
Report back.
Thank you. That'd be an interesting conversation. Okay. Consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. So, does anybody want to move this fantastic?
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Second.
Would you, thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Oh, comment.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, hold on. Would anybody like to comment on the consent calendar?
None.
Great, okay. Do you have a, is there anybody that has a question or comment about the, I don't, I should slow down. Does anybody here have a question or comment about the consent calendar?
No.
Okay, great, all right. Would you like to call the roll?
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Great, thank you so much. We did not pull any items from the consent calendar. Ordinances, waive the first reading, make necessary findings and adopt, and an urgency ordinance prohibiting smoking on the Eldorado Trail through the city of Placerville. And one that looks remarkably like that is 10.2. Is that actually a duplication? They are different, I thought they were different, but?
No, they're the same.
They are the same.
The reason for that is, uh, sometimes it's just considered really good practice to, when you're adopting an urgency ordinance, to have a backup ordinance under the normal ordinance procedure.
Oh.
Because if somebody were to challenge the urgency ordinance and it'd be determined that the facts didn't exist to warrant the adoption.
Ah, you could start the process.
You've got the process started, so that's why you have two identical items except one is an urgency ordinance.
Okay. I vote C.
Okay, well, hold on.
Wait a minute.
Hold on, don't, don't, hold the Spanish, okay.
Sorry.
Um, okay, so 10.1, Mr. Morris.
Okay. Mayor and council, I think this is pretty self-explanatory, but, um, due to wet winter and abundance of vegetation creating dangerous amounts of fuel for wildfires and substantial amounts of such fuel are adjacent to our Eldorado Trail, it was suggested to us that we consider a, uh, ordinance to prohibit smoking on the trail. Um, we looked at, as, as the city attorney has just mentioned, uh, in order to do this, immediately you have to make findings as are outlined in the, actually, in the ordinance, and once you've done that, then you can adopt and make an urgency ordinance, it then becomes effective immediately. I want to stress that, uh, we're not going to all of a sudden send people up and down the trail looking for smokers, uh, this will mostly be, uh, when our enforcement officers are out there, uh, our police officers, uh, they will enforce it at that time, or if we get a complaint, we can, we can respond to complaints on that also.
And we're going to put signs?
Yeah, it will have to be signed in order to really.
It will have to be signed too, yeah. So, and we're actually working on some signings for some other things right now, so we can, we can look at that.
All right, great.
You have comments?
Yes, uh, new signings will actually go up tomorrow, eyes on the trail, um, with a lot of help from certain council members and, uh, our, uh, friends of the trail. We're going to have, uh, new signage, uh, going up, uh, tomorrow, that will, um, have the, the little barcodes, uh, so that you can use your smartphone and get directly to the police department, um, with any, uh, any kind of activity that you see along the trail that might be inappropriate, and so we're looking forward to getting those out tomorrow.
That's pretty good. So I don't, I, I think I'll just leave it at that, if, uh, enter any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions about this for staff?
No questions but comment that, just really excited to see those signs going up and really, really well done on that, and, uh, look forward to more progress on the trail.
Thank you, all right, anyone else? Okay.
Um, I have a question.
Okay.
Why is it an urgency ordinance? I mean, I, fact.
If, if you don't, yeah, if you don't adopt it as an urgency ordinance, you then would have the first reading tonight, the second reading the next week, and then 30 days later, so it takes, but it's urgency because of the high fire danger.
Okay.
And we had a fire.
And we had a fire.
Yes.
And Jackie found, where is she?
She's right there behind the podium.
I can't see, these are old glasses. I couldn't see you, you were there last time I saw you.
She moved.
We made her move.
Okay, so it's urgent because you found like over 200 butts, correct?
200 butts, okay.
First of all, uh, thank fellow council members for their support on this, and thank, uh, Mr. Yule for his support and Jackie Noe for all of her hard work. Uh, this is a, there's two issues here, there's the Trail Watch program, which those signs are going up, as well as the prohibiting of smoking. Um, about a month ago, um, the state was in, there seemed like every day there was a 500-acre fire occurring, and it was the fact, um, you know, of all the massive amounts of grass. The same day that we had a fire on our trail, there was an 11-acre fire in Auburn that almost, well, it did threaten several homes. Um, it was found to be having been started by somebody smoking marijuana and discarding the butt into the grass.
For that kid.
The kid, I think, turned himself in, he felt so bad about it. Uh, so seeing that kind of a reaction, and then Jackie's input with the regular cleaning crew, they pick up a tremendous amount of cigarette butts, found out that we do not, it's up until this evening, we did not have any ordinance to prohibit that, no way for either the park staff or our police department to effectively approach someone, and so it just, there's the urgency. And we're just blessed we haven't had another fire.
Okay.
Knock on wood.
All right, anybody else? Okay, would the com, would the comment like to public on this? Would the public like to comment on this?
Here comes Sue.
Sue Rodman, former Forest Service employee, resident of Placerville. Uh, I'm frankly appalled that this wasn't already done along, because we, I thought the trail was part of our park system, and I thought when we eliminated smoking in our parks, that that would have eliminated smoking on the trail. And as I have walked around the trail, I too have seen cigarette butts, and I actually had a member of the public, when I was working in the Forest Service, say cigarettes don't start fires. And I said, have you noticed every major road with grass and brush alongside it has had a fire this year? Where do you think those come from? I said, why don't you talk to Johnny Cash? He had to pay for a fire that he started with a cigarette. So I am.
He did what?
He had to pay, pay for all the suppression costs.
Oh.
If you're found to start a fire, you are responsible for all of the suppression costs of that fire. And so, yes, we need this, we need it urgently, we should have had it three months ago, and now is good.
Thank you, Sue.
Good evening, council, Jackie Noe. I just want to thank you all for acting so quickly and being proactive on this issue. Um, we've done a lot of work on the trail and this is just continuing, and, um, just appreciate all the support from everyone. Thank you.
I think your Facebook posting, I really had a lot of input on this, and I think Mark Acuna grabbed it and ran with it and proposed this.
Okay.
But thank all of you.
Okay, let's pull this back. Uh, as one of the council members that has done nothing on this, I would like to move this agenda item. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, we probably do a roll, let's do a roll call on this.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
So do we, do we have to do, should we do 10.2 just as a, as a safety measure? Okay. Uh, 10.2, Cleve. Well, it's the same thing, except it's not an urgent, it's not an urgency, it's just a regular ordinance thing. Okay, go.
Yes, the only difference is, instead of adopting this item, you'll be introducing the ordinance and waiving the first reading.
Okay. Uh, we, do, all right, I have to go. Do we have any questions or comments from the council on this?
Nope.
Okay. Would the public like to comment on this?
Nope.
Okay, we'll bring it back up here. Um, I'll make the same motion, I will move this item, 10.2.
And I'll second it.
Okay, great. Roll call.
No, you don't need a roll call.
You don't need a roll call on this one?
Not on this one.
Just, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Great. Okay.
Knocking them out now.
We're on a roll.
Item 12.1, ratifying, wait, no, here, let me, where's my agenda? I have to read these off the agenda. 12.1, ratifying a construct, what are you doing over there? Hey, hey, pay attention.
Oh, I'm just-
Don't mess around.
Just screwing with my boyfriend.
Adopt a resolution ratifying a construction services contract with Doug Verkamp, General Engineering, Inc., in the amount of $20,365 and some change for emergency services performed near the intersection of Fornie and Brew Road, and authorizing the Director of Community Services to execute the same, approving a $21,000 budget liquidation from the Canal Street Reconstruction Project, and approving a budget appropriation for Measure L fund in the amount of $21,000 for the Fornie Road Emergency Repair Project. Mr. Yule?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. On March 12, 2017, city public works staff was made aware of a 20-by-30-foot sinkhole located in front of Thompson's Toyota on Fornie Road. Given the high traffic volume and the potential for further damage to the road, it was decided to solicit the emergency services of Doug Verkamp Engineering to assist with the repair. The scope of work consisted of identifying underground utilities, saw cutting the roadway, installing bedding, backfill, and compaction, grinding, paving, and striping of the roadway, all to Caltrans specifications. The project was completed on March 16. As a result of this effort, city staff is seeking ratification of a construction service performed by Doug Verkamp in the amount of $20,365.72. Unfortunately, the project is not eligible for state or federal storm damage reimbursement. We tried that strategy, and we failed. The cost of repair was not included within the adopted fiscal year CIP budget. As a result, staff is recommending that the necessary funds be allocated from the liquidation of the Measure L Canal Street Reconstruction Project in the amount of $21,000. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this matter.
Okay, are there any questions for staff?
No, sir.
Okay, great. Would the public like to comment on this?
They've gone home.
No, they're out there in the thing. Okay.
Except Barry.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move approval of the item.
Second.
Okay, since we're doing money, let's do the roll.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkinson?
Aye.
Great. All right. I just had 12.3 here. Oh, here. Item 12.2, adopt a resolution approving the purchase of a used, this is so cool, a used 2012 International 4400 dump truck in the amount of $64,479 from Senate Semi Trailer, Inc., and approving a $4,827 budget appropriation from the general fund contingency for unforeseen expenditures for the said dump truck purchase, and approve $4,826 budget appropriation from the water enterprise and contingency for unforeseen expenditures for the said dump truck purchase, and surprisingly enough, approve a $4,826 budget appropriation from the sewer enterprise fund contingency for unforeseen expenditures for the said dump truck purchase. Mr. Yule?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As discussed during the 2017-18 budget deliberations, the Public Works Division is in need of a full-size dump truck to haul asphalt, cutback, rock, and debris to and from the corporation yard. Given the high costs associated with the purchase of a new dump truck and the anticipated amount of use, it was determined that it was in the city's best interest to purchase a used five-yard dump truck. The Public Works Division conducted a statewide search for a low-mileage used truck. Three trucks were identified for consideration. It was determined that the 2012 International 4400 version at a price of $64,479 provides the best value and is well-equipped to perform the necessary tasks. City council appropriated $50,000 towards the purchase of a used dump truck as part of the fiscal year budget. Although an effort was made to stay within budget, staff was unable to locate an adequate truck within the $50,000 price range. As a result, staff is requesting an additional $14,479 to be equally allocated from the funds that were mentioned in the recommendation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
All right. Go ahead.
Nope.
Well, we certainly want the Public Works Department to be able to haul asphalt, so...
[laughing]
I'm sorry.
You had to go there, didn't you? You had to go there.
It was low hang, hey, there ain't nobody here, and there's, it was low-hanging fruit. Okay.
There's nobody here.
Dave warned you.
There's people here.
Is there anybody with a serious question?
I do have a serious question.
First off, no, I want to make comment. This is one fine-looking truck. I mean, this, when you-
I agree. I was impressed when I saw that.
You stick, you stick some of our emblems on the side of the doors and stuff, and this is going to, we're just going to take it in parades, I think.
Christmas parade.
Christmas parade. Right in the back of the dump truck.
Oh, that'd be fun. Only when it's new, though.
Okay.
I'm in, I'm all in.
All right, now, to the serious part of our show. Do we have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Steve, quick question. What is the estimated mileage, life of a dump truck, in terms of mileage? Just for-
It's more on hours than it actually is the mileage. We have short little trips, so this one's just right at 100,000, so it could go to 300,000, which could last-
A long time.
We have such short little trips, and we don't use it that frequently. It's not like an everyday-
Right.
-type of tool for us, so I think we'll get plenty of longevity out of it.
Well, that's good news. Great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, since we're checking out its hauling capacity. Steve, does this thing have an automatic transmission in it?
I don't know. The answer to that question.
You said Cleve got to drive it.
Pardon me?
I thought Cleve's test drove it.
I haven't driven it yet.
It's a diesel engine?
They won't let me.
Diesel engine?
Diesel engine, and it's powerful. This is the most powerful engine out of the three that, that we looked at, and it'll be capable of towing our Durapatcher, which is something the other ones couldn't do. So, if we get that out of mothballs, we'll be able to pull it with the new, the new dump truck.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Steve, for his research in this, and finding us a good used one.
Yeah. No, that's really good. All kidding aside, this is going to be great.
He explained to me earlier, there's quite an equipment shortage-
Yeah, we need it.
... due to the past winter-
It's going to be perfect.
... and what have you. So, he's really done a good job on this. It's certainly a piece they need. So, I would be happy to make a motion to approve.
I just want to say that I think some of the comments that we offered at budget hearing, and he did due diligence and followed everything we kind of requested, and thank you, Steve.
Parade use is just really an awesome idea.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'd go blast that thing and use it in a parade, because that would be nice.
Really cool. Okay. Would the public like to comment on this? No. Okay. Bringing it back. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkinson?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. 12.3. Adopt a resolution approving amendments to the job description for the public works superintendent position, and approving a new salary schedule effective August 12, 2017, including the following new salary schedule for the public works superintendent positions, and then there's steps in mind. Okay. Who has this? Mr. Yule, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
As a component of the now-completed Blair Lanes project, the city's two water delivery systems have been combined into one. Given the size and complexity of the city's singular system, the California Code of Regulations referred to as Title 22 dictates that the city employ a distribution operator with a Level 3 license. A distribution operator Level 3 license is much harder to achieve and includes a higher level of responsibility and expertise than the previously required Level 2 license. It is for this primary reason, staff is recommending amendments to the job description for the public works superintendent position, and adjustments to the associated salary schedule to reflect the increased requirements and responsibility. The proposed salary schedule will ensure that the city can recruit and retain a qualified employee possessing a distribution Level 3 license as required. The project's annual cost for this change in classification is $17,078. The city council adopted the fiscal year 2017-18 operating budget, which appropriated the necessary funds for the reclassification of an existing senior maintenance worker position to a public works superintendent position, with the salary schedule identified within the staff report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions for staff on this?
No.
We have a comment on this?
Comment.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing this forward, Steve, and I have new salary schedule, looks great. If we are approving amendments to the job description tonight, I do have a couple of things. Under the second paragraph, under identifying characteristics, fifth, there's a, an is that needs to go out, a division supervisor also assists. We need to take the is out. And in looking at the summary description, I think we can rework that. I had, had to read that many times to kind of understand what was, you know, really being said there. And should I read what I propose? To see, to see how this reflects on the council?
Sure.
Okay. So, under summary description, this is what I came up with for, so I could understand what, what we're going after here. Under, let's see, under administrative direction of the public works operation manager, the public works superintendent supervises and coordinates the activities and operations of the maintenance division within the public works department, period. Duties include the coordination and supervision of all operations and maintenance slash repair services related to streets, sidewalks, storm drains, water distribution systems, and wastewater collection systems. In addition, the public works superintendent coordinates assigned activities with other divisions, departments, and outside agencies, and provides highly responsible and complex administrative support to the public works operations manager.
I like that. I had a difficult time, I kept rereading it and re, and thinking-
I did, too, yeah.
You know, so, I think that's good.
And what I can do is, I can, I can type that up and submit it to Regina for your review, if, if, if that's the council's direction. Yeah. Okay.
I don't have a problem with it. I'll tell you, if you read through our other job descriptions, almost all of them read like this.
What's the problem with that?
This was from when we, we had a consultant do it, and they-
Well, give them to me.
Well, we need this-
We'll pay you in the future.
From now on, let Wendy do it.
Wendy?
No, it was just, it was convoluted.
It's convoluted, it's-
I'll take the vice.
It's a sentence that's like-
It's, it's not, they're not complete sentences.
It is. It's a whole-
But, I mean, the description.
Well, this is the way, this is the way the description reads, "Under administrative direction of the public works operations manager, supervises and coordinates the activities and operation of the maintenance division."
Okay, so-
I mean, it goes on and on. It's, it's not clear.
If you delete commas, I-
No, it's not clear.
No, no, no.
It's not grammatically correct. It's not complete sentences.
It's just wrong.
It's poorly written. Yeah, it's poorly written.
Yes, I agree. I definitely, I'm a grammar Nazi, so I know.
Okay.
Anyway, but-
I don't have a problem with what you recommend. If you get it to me, Wendy, we can, we'll make that change. Just adopt it with that.
So, with that, I will move approval of the item with the proposed amendments.
Second.
Somebody goes over it.
Per staff review, per staff review.
Do we have a motion, a second? We have a motion and a second. Do, this is just a regular, that's right. Any from, anybody from the public like to comment on this? No? Okay. We have a motion, a second. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkinson?
Aye.
Okay. See, council reports from other agency meetings, Eldorado County Transit Authority.
None.
Did you?
I went, and I don't have a report.
Oh, okay. Eldorado County Transportation Commission.
I went to that, too.
Do you want to report on that?
Wendy, you were there.
Just very briefly, we adopted the active transportation study, which is very interesting. It's the only one of its kind in the state of California, which will be an interesting tool and perhaps giving us the metrics to be-
More competitive.
-more competitive for grants for active transportation projects. So, that'll be kind of interesting. So, we adopted that.
I thought that was really something to be proud of, that the other cities now are-
Exactly.
-inquiring about ours, yeah.
So, we'll look forward to seeing how that-
Yes. And we had a very nice, we had our kind of every six-month, or I don't know how often they do that, but every six-month, they go and they go run through all the projects that are going on, either city, county, state of California, and it was very interesting to see all the stuff going on. Of course, most noteworthy is the Highway 49 Bridge there in Coloma, which they're going to be finishing next year. So, yeah, that was, that was a very good meeting. LFCO.
We have not met yet this morning.
Okay. We had a transportation committee meeting. It was, it was long, but they're not, let's see, what it, they're still working, we need to get them to come up here and do-
You mean SECO?
SECO, yeah, the SECOG Transportation Committee. And we need to get them to come up here. They're getting very involved in things for seniors and transportation issues for seniors, but even community issues for seniors, and there's a lot of good stuff in there, and I think a lot of it would be applicable to this part of the world. So, I'm going to try to get them to come up and just make the presentation, rather than me try to describe it to you. And then the, oh, the other one that's really interesting, and it's kind of a longer-term thing, is they're starting to gear up for next year's, for the next MTP, and they're going to start, if they haven't already, they're going to start contacting our staff, and, and, and getting that process going. It's going to be about a year and a half from now when they'll finally get to it, but it's, it's, it's pretty complicated. Our staff, Transportation Commission staff, and county staff all get involved, provide them information. But what I really want to get on our radar is when they start to muck around in 2021, which is a few years from now, the census. Because we got to find out, the census and our projections, because they're all based on all that stuff, because of the arena stuff and all that. Because I think, what I heard, I don't know where they came up, the numbers that they use for our population projections for this town, I don't know where they came from, but they're crazy. So, that's, yeah, they're still crazy. Well, they haven't changed, because they won't change.
That's right. There's still those old-
Yeah, they're going to, until that, but the MTP process will be one that'll kind of tee that up, and then we'll be working with them through that. So, that's kind of the two things I wanted to bring up. Two by two.
Patty? We had a, do you want to talk about what was, what we talked about with the two by two?
Wow, it must have been something.
I'm trying to remember what we talked about. I think one of the major things we talked about was the street maintenance, now that we do have some money for street maintenance and getting some agreements going with the county for joint projects-
Yeah.
-that we can do for our annual maintenance program. Doesn't work for this summer, but because they're already halfway through theirs and et cetera, but starting next year, we'll look at doing that. Talked a little bit about animal control and our concerns there.
Those were the main issues.
I think that those were the two.
The road maintenance was a, was a big takeaway. That was a good coordination.
So, the two by two road maintenance, is that like four by four? Is it like two by two?
No, it's sharing, it's sharing costs with the county, the city and the county. Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, like, okay, I always use this as an example. They clear the, they, they clear the snow on Cedar Ravine down to the line, that's city limits. They clear the, they clear the snow on Cedar Ravine down to the line, the city limits. So we're saying, let's get together and have you come on down further and.
So they're going to agree to like come a little further down?
Share, yeah.
Coordinate on joint projects where there's a nexus. Yeah.
Let's not focus.
We would share the.
Nothing specific, but a process.
Well, no, that's just an example.
Coordinating.
I just use that as an example. I'm just, just.
There could be like Mosquito Road.
Mosquito Road is a really good one. Exactly.
We could work together.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any requests for future agenda items beside the one that we already requested? Can you think of, apparently not, okay. Anybody else?
Let me check with Cleve, the animal control presentation?
Oh, yes.
Yes, that will be, I will put that on your next agenda.